Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Meeting of the City Council. It is Tuesday, December 5th, 2017. It is 6:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cuff.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus has an excused absence. Councilmember Shipley?
Here.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to Agenda Item Number D, which is public participation. Any member of the public is allowed to speak on items not on the agenda. So these are items that are not on the agenda this evening. You can come up to the podium. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Devoi, and we live in Cypress Knoll. And one year ago, our house was completely finished being built. And we found out just recently, when they started building a house next to us, that an ordinance had been changed about the elevation of land. This house is about three feet above our property. I just came today because we tried to talk to the city, and I have to say there's some very rude people here. We even asked to talk to the mayor. We've left three messages, no return calls. The only person that would respond to us and to come out to see us was Steve Nobiel. All we wanted was someone to come out and look at the property and let us know what we could do. They wouldn't even come out after the Porta John fell into our swell. We're at the point that we're sorry that we moved to this community. You know, our whole area is lower than any than this house right next to us, and we've gotten a lot of water on our property with the rains. You know, we thought by moving here and paying the taxes that we pay that it was for the betterment of our community, and we're starting to think it isn't. All we wanted was someone to look at the elevation. Now, they've poured the cement for the and they started to build the block. So we're sort of SOL at this point. And, you know, we're we even gave Steve a bunch of pictures. So we just want some answers of why this ordinance was passed, and we didn't even see it in the paper, because it was passed after our house was built.
Thank you. I'll answer your question at the end of public comment. Next speaker.
My name is Mike Harrison, and address is 88 Rain Tree Circle. Similar but different issue. Along Ray Drive, which is right in front of Rain Tree Circle. Rain Tree Circle is a circle comes in and back out. Ray Drive, between the two of those, several months ago, the city came out, and I've lived there four and a half years, we've never had any flooding. They dug up the ditch, and now all of a sudden, we've got flooding. That flooding goes over at least three quarters of the road when it rains, which creates a dangerous situation for the cars coming and going, because you typically wouldn't drive through the water, so you change lanes. They've also torn up the driveway going into Rain Tree Circle, and it's been cut six foot wide all the way across, and has been that way for several months. I've called the city and talked to the people, and they said, well, because of the hurricane. Well, they started to work three months before the hurricane. We still have flooding. We still have a messed up driveway. I came again today to talk to them, not knowing if I could come and address the meeting tonight. And they did have a gentleman call me. He said the grading part would be done before the week's over. They were out there working today, but I don't think they solved the problem. And I asked him about repairing our driveway, and he said, well, they've got to move the utilities. And apparently, and these are rumors, this part goes into rumors, that apparently someone from our community has discussed it with the city, and that our entire community will be without water for more than two days when they do repair it. And two days without water and sewer in a community is unacceptable. And I just wanted to know what the city is. I wanted to get an official opinion of what's happening, and what's going to happen, and when it's going to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Maggie Hampton from Cypress Knoll, and on November 17th, the mayor said on WNZF that transitional housing was coming into Cypress Knoll. We have gotten some information from Steve Nobiel, but we would like to hear directly from the mayor about this, if she misspoke, because none of us heard anything back from the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. See no one, I'll close public comments. We'll take it back.
Nope.
Good evening. Robert Stoltman, 2305 Valdavia Court in St. Augustine. What a packed house. I came to talk about something probably off the agenda, which is renewable energy with wave, wave energy devices. And I emailed everyone on the commission a package earlier. The city spent, you know, I think close to a million dollars about a decade ago with the Coquina Coast Group modeling desalination plant with maybe a pipeline to outline cities, and a lot of money was spent on that project. And I have been working in Daytona Beach, which I brought this package for you guys, which shows the wave actuator devices, the leases that you would need offshore to utilize them. The CITO technology that I'm promoting uses a wave buoy system, and it can make not only electricity, but water. And it's done within the three miles of state waters, so it can be done with the Department of Environmental Protection, which I have a letter in here from them outlining how much the leases would cost. And most of this stuff that I've done so far has been in Daytona. So there was a lot of meetings in Tallahassee concerning the leases. Their main concern was that it would be outside of the beach re-nourishment zones. And the modeling that I did allowed for that to fit well away from those areas. And I'd just like to give this to you guys to consider. I talked to the fellow that still has all the information from the Coquina Coast Group, and I don't know if you guys are aware of that project. That was about 10 years ago. And, you know, the main problem with it was the production cost of the desalinated water. The buoy devices that are in this package, they basically work, they're renewable, they're actuated by the waves. And they produce high-pressure water, which they send to the station on the beachhead. And since the water's already pressurized, you can either run it through electric turbines and make electricity, or you can run it through the desalination plant. So the cost of it is much less than some of the options that you guys were looking at before. I appreciate you listening, and could I leave this to someone?
Thank you for comments. Next speaker. I will close public comments. To the first speaker, Mr. Landon, if you could address the elevation issue where it's Cypress Knoll, and what the ordinance stated, and what the issue is.
This is news to me. I'm not sure what the issue is.
I was there. Let me, first, it wasn't one of our ordinances. This is when the state raised the elevation. Okay, so that's not our ordinance.
Minimum, minimum height for a house.
Home height, right, right. Okay, so that's, that's, but, okay, so that's it. But this house, of course, is, in this particular situation, is well above the minimum. So what you have is a slope like this into, you know, so, and I'll let you go from there.
Hopefully, it can be taken care of during construction. I'd ask them to get ahold of Steve Flanagan. With all the faces back there, I don't know where Steve is, but if the resident can get ahold of Steve, he can.
Why don't we do this? If Steve can actually get her information tonight and contact her.
Right, right, exactly.
That's probably the best way to do that.
Yep. And this was one of my items for this later on, but I'm going to let that go, and we'll wait until she hears from him.
She can hook up with Steve, and maybe Steve can help her with some of the details.
So before you leave tonight, Mr. Flanagan will get your contact information and reach out to you to set up a meeting to come out and assess the situation. You're welcome. Second issue on Ray Drive, if you can explain what's going on out there with the tearing up of the roadway, and especially without water for two days.
Yes. This is a project our crews were performing for stormwater improvements. We actually, this was part of what we call modeling. We looked at the area to try to improve the drainage in the R section, and actually redirecting some of the water. Our crews ran into water and sewer lines that were not where they were expected on the plans, so we have a conflict between the two. This all happened just prior to Hurricane Irma, so we obviously pulled the crews off. It has to, now the water and sewer line have to be moved. We're back on it, on the project. That's why the gentleman said we have a crew out there today to try to make the situation better. We'll correct it all. We'll put it back the way it was after it's finished. And as far as the water being out for a couple of days, I would hope it's going to be more like a couple hours, but it's like any other utility project like this, we may have to turn the water off temporarily, but we will stay on the construction until we get it back on. But two days is unacceptable.
Two days is not going to happen.
No, no.
Let's just make that very clear. We cannot have that happen.
No, it's, it's ours, unless it's something highly unusual. But we'll, we'll do it as quickly as possible, right, Richard? I've never heard of a construction project causing it to be gone, be out for two days. That just sounds like fish got a little bigger than it should be.
Okay. All right, so we'll move quickly on that as possible.
Yes, it is a priority to get it finished, and we will stay on it.
The next comment about transitional housing. Yes, I was on the radio, and I had misspoke. Transitional housing was an infill development project that we had approved over in the L section, and it was a gated community where what we meant by transitional housing had to do with folks that were elderly in our community that wanted to move to maybe a smaller home because their spouse passed away or something like that, and they no longer wanted to or could take care of a 2,800 square foot home. So this gives them an option to move into a home that they can own, maintain, take care of, very nice homes that we approved over in that area. As far as the location goes, I misspoke, it's not being located in Cypress Knoll. So for the record, let that stand corrected. And we'll take the information Mr. Sullivan gave and give it to our utility folks.
Utility, yes.
Okay. Okay. Agenda item number E1 is approval of the minutes of the City Council. November 21st, 2017, business meeting. November 28th, 2017, workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number F2 is presentation of the 2017 video awards. Mr. Landon.
This is very exciting, and I'm going to let Cindy take the lead.
I'm assuming these are what's in these?
Oh, yes. I did not see those, yes. Yeah, we, our video communications people are very talented. They get awards every year. They have their own little trophy case upstairs.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lane, and the Communications and Marketing Manager. And as you've observed, we do have the awards that I'm going to be speaking of on display here in front of the mayor and Mr. Nobiel. And I was hoping that I could convince my staff to come out of the video production room and join us, so hopefully, they'll show up in a minute. So video is an important communications tool for us. We use it on social media, our website, our YouTube channel, Palm Coast Television, and of course, the mainstream media also uses our video from time to time. We produced 59 videos this year, and that doesn't include our Facebook Live, that doesn't include our Facebook Live or short clips that we use on social media. So our video efforts are led primarily by Video Production Coordinator Tom Hanson and Digital Communications Coordinator Jason Gerallo. And tonight, I would like to recognize them for seven national and state awards that we received in 2017. And as Mr. Landon mentioned, we do typically win awards every year, but I think this year was a pretty big one for us. We had three videos that won these awards. Two of them are part of our series of public service announcements that we produce with the fire department. And I know you've seen some of those before. They're always really fun, and they usually star some of our firefighters and some of our city employees and their families. I wanted to show you one of them tonight that is made for the holidays. It has to do with holiday safety tips, so we're going to introduce, we're going to have you meet Joey Christmas. And let's see. Working, there we go.
No, really. His name is Joey Christmas because he loves Christmas. Joey especially loves decorating his home, trimming the tree, baking holiday cookies, and the warm glow of Yuletide candles. Of course, safety goes along with all of these, and Joey has a few tips he's happy to share with you this holiday season. Let's go see what those might be. Did you know, nationally, 48% of all 200 annual Christmas tree fires are caused by some type of electrical failure or malfunction due to overloaded outlets or worn electrical wires on or near a tree? Now that's better, but wait a minute. Is that, is that a frayed worn wire? Christmas tree fires cause an average of six deaths, 22 injuries, and more than $18 million in property damage per year. Many are caused from dry trees that have frayed wires either on them or close by, or they're too close to a source of ignition, such as a fireplace or space heater.
Joey, have you watered the tree since we brought it home?
Hmm. Trees brought indoors become thirsty very quickly. Check your water levels daily, and water is needed.
It's Joey's turn to bake the holiday cookies this year. He's proud of this batch, ready for the oven, which is preheating.
Honey, where did you put all those things you cleaned up last night when all your friends were here? Never store anything flammable in the oven compartment. Clean your stove regularly, and never leave food unattended while cooking on the stove.
From 2009 to 2013 per year, U.S. Fire Departments responded to an average of 162,400 home fires involving cooking equipment. These fires caused an annual average of 430 deaths, 5,400 injuries, and $1.1 billion in direct property damage.
Wow, that was an awesome parade. I'm getting hungry, though.
Yeah, let's go eat.
Okay, come on, let's go. Aren't you forgetting something? You left your candles burning in the living room.
From 2009 to 2013, home candles were responsible for 9,300 home structure fires. These fires caused 86 deaths, 827 injuries, and $374 million in direct property damage.
So now you know to be fire wise this holiday season.
If we can do it.
Then you can do it, too. And by the way, always exercise proper ladder safety when putting up and taking down your lights and decorations. Never use stacked chairs as props or as replacements for a proper ladder. And also remember, position your ladder on level ground. Use your center of gravity for balance, and always hold on with two hands. Never stand on the top platform or the top step of your folding ladder. Never try to reposition any ladder by hopping or walking it. Good job, Joey. Thanks for watching. Have a safe holiday.
I meant to tell you before we started that that stars Lieutenant Joey Pacey as the real, the Joey, Meet Joey Christmas, and his real-life wife Abby played the wife, and also Lieutenant Matt Stevens was the firefighter who was instructing them. And so I think we all learned a few things from watching that. Mr. Nobiel, when you're putting up your lights this year, careful with those ladders. So that, that video, the holiday fire safety tips, Meet Joey Christmas video, won a 2017 Telly Award. That's a bronze award in the category of Safety for Non-Broadcast Productions. The Telly Awards are judged by more than 500 industry professionals, with about 20% of each year's entries being recognized. The other PSA to receive an award this year is the Zombie Survival Guide to Bicycle Safety. That's a video, I think most of you've probably seen it before. It's the zombie-themed video that we fashioned after Zombie Land, but it has rules for bicycle safety instead of, well, rules for survival. That video won a Telly Award in 2016, and this year, it won three additional awards, which include a Golden Image Award in the Video Public Service category from the Florida Public Relations Association. The Golden Image Award is given to the top entry in each of four divisions, and the division for which we won was the Digital Tools of Public Relations. It also won a Silver, Silver Award in the Communicator Awards. It's a Silver Award for Distinction in the Film/Video Safety category. NTOA, which is the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, have a Government Programming Awards, and that video won third place in the Public Safety category. NTOA is really special to us because while Tom is a member of NTOA, it recognizes outstanding video that's produced by local governments, and the categories cover a wide range of topics, from community events, documentary and public affairs, to performing arts, sports, and elections coverage. Our division serves as a judge for the NTOA awards each year, of course, in the category for which we're not entering. The other video that won three national honors this year is our Intern Recruitment video. It's called Find Your Future Internships with the City of Palm Coast. It won three awards, a 2017 Telly Award. The category was in Government Relations for Non-Broadcast Publications. It also won a Communicator Award, the Silver Award for Distinction in Film/Video Government Relations, and also the NTOA Government Programming Awards. That intern video won third place in the Public Education category. So I want to congratulate Jason and Tom. It's a pleasure working with them. They are very creative, and as you saw tonight, and I'm sure anytime you want to check out any of the videos, we have our YouTube channel right at the bottom of our website, and you can look at any of the videos that they produce. So I would love to get a picture, if you all would come down and have a picture with Tom and Jason. Do you want to say something? Do you think we should hold them? Okay, I'm going to take a few.
Sure. Jose, would you take the photograph while Cindy's in?
Yeah.
Jose, it's one, two, three.
All right, everybody. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thanks for providing such great information to our residents on very important issues. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number G3, which is an ordinance. Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 comprehensive plan as previously amended. This is pursuant to Section 160 or Chapter 163 of the Fourth Statutes, amending the future land use map for flume designation for 109 acres, more or less, of certain real property, from Flagler County future land use map designations of residential medium-density, commercial low-intensity, and conservation, to City of Palm Coast designations of residential, mixed-use, and conservation described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance includes a note on the future land use map to limit residential development on the subject parcels to 615 dwelling units. It provides for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification, severability, and effective date. Madam Mayor, Council, this ordinance, G3, is a legislative matter. It has a companion ordinance, which is our next agenda item, G4, which is in the nature of a quasi judicial hearing. That is the rezoning, the next, next matter. This is amending the future land use map.
Madam.
Mayor, City Council, word has it, most of these people are here for, for this item. This is a second reading, and so during the first reading, there was concerns expressed about the height that's been approved for, for this project. And I believe that's probably why most people are here, is because since that time, we've heard quite a bit about, about the project. So I think what I would like to do, instead of our typical second reading, it's ready to go, give some additional background and understanding, because I think there's a misunderstanding as to the action City Council's being asked to take tonight. They are not approving a rezoning. They are not approving or denying anything different than is what already has been approved for this property, what we call property rights or entitlements. So let me give you a little, little background. In 2006, this property was rezoned by Flagler County, and it was in Flagler County and not in our city. And at that time, it included single-family, multifamily, and about 45,000, 46,000 square feet of commercial. The property once again is located between Colbert Lane and the intercoastal, just north of Roberts Road. The, in 2006, the Plan Unit Development, better known as the PUD, that was approved by Flagler County, included the multifamily up to a height of 95 feet, which is eight or nine stories, and that's where the concern has come in. It stayed, 2006 is when Great Recession hit, and if you drive by, you'll see some streets, some infrastructure was put in, but the project died and has laid vacant ever since that time. As our economy improves, and we're starting to see development pick up, this property...
Just a second. We have a policy, our rules and procedures state we can't have these cards held up at meetings, sir, so I would ask you to just take it down. Thank you.
That, okay, and so it stayed on. Okay, and so it stayed idle in unincorporated Flagler County. Recently, Flagler County amended their PUD. I think they reduced some of the density. I'm not sure exactly the details as to the difference between what they approved in 2006 and what they approved in 2017. But shortly after, they have an amendment in Flagler County, they came to the city, and our policy is that if you want water and sewer and all the other city services, you have to annex first. And this area is in our annexation area. So a few, a couple of months ago, the city annexed the property, and we had our standard annexation agreement that recognizes the county zoning and the state law that goes along with that. And so then, at this point, what this proposal is, is the initial comp plan designation for the city and the initial zoning. This is a case where the state of Florida has preempted cities from taking any action that is different than what was approved by Flagler County unless the developer or the property owner consents to that, those differences. So the, at this time, we're not rezoning the property, we're not changing the comp plan designation, other than we're doing the most compatible zoning and comp plan designation that falls under the city jurisdiction, or the city's plan and the city zoning. So it doesn't change the entitlements, and, and City Council, by law, state law, and I'll let the attorney address this further if you'd like, cannot require that those entitlements be changed, and that includes building height, density, the mix of uses. So what happens now, just so the audience understands, is that if you turn these down, then the zoning and the comp plan designation will stay the same. And what that will be is it will stay under the county comp plan and the county zoning designation. The developer can still develop the property as allowed by the county zoning. So in essence, what you do is, Jose will have to learn some details on the county zoning code and the PUD agreement, because that's what he would have to follow as this property owner comes in to develop. So this isn't a matter of changing, this isn't a matter of granting approval of this or, or being able to make it, the zoning go away that the county approved. This is a matter of just designated under the city designation. I have asked a representative from the property owner to make a little presentation to let the audience know what, and City Council know what the proposal is. You know, this is one of those, Mr., I'm, I'm going to butcher your name, so I'm going to let you introduce yourself, but this is one of those that unlike what usually happens with zoning, we always say that we really don't know what the project's going to be. It's usually just a bubble map, or it's, you know, we always say, well, this, we don't really have a project. In this case, they have a project, and so because they have gone so far in the county process, they are ready to move forward with their actual project. And so I thought it would be a good idea to at least have the property owner describe to City Council what exactly the project is that they had approved in the county, and what they plan on do on this property, whether it's under county zoning or city zoning. So Ken, if you'll take it.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Landon. Honorable Mayor, honorable Council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to put a face on the company that is going to develop this property. My name is Ken Belshi. I live at 164 West Village Drive in St. Augustine. And I originally moved to Palm Coast in 1999 to, with the same company, to develop Palm Coast Plantation. We bought about 1,000 acres there along the intercoastal waterway, and we did develop Palm Coast Plantation to 643 single-family residence, home sites that we're very proud of. I hope the county and the city is very proud of that as well. We carved off about 113 acres on the end that we didn't know quite what to do with, but we began the envisioning process to, for this property, and determined that the best use of it was a mix of single-family and mid-rise condominium buildings. We began the entitlement process and went through a rigorous process with the county. Were opposed by Sea Ray across the water from us. Eventually entered into an agreement with them to pay them $1,500,000 to agree that we could build our buildings up to 95 feet. That money was supposed, and I'm assuming did go to modernizing their plant. And so we, we got the entitlements in 2006 with the PUD, and the recession came in, we had to put the project on hold, and so it's, you know, it was 2014 before we came back and dusted it off and decided to start the development process again. At that point, we took a look at our plan and decided that the canals that we had originally intended to build were probably not as environmentally friendly as we would like. We chose to change that setup and build what you're seeing here on the screen tonight, which is a, a lake in the middle surrounded by single-family residences, and we would also, are also going to build a, what we're calling a boathouse, which is a dry stack marina, where each and every lot owner in the community will get a slip in the dry stack building, and an 83-slip marina there, along with five mid-rise condominium buildings. Now, the reason that we need the height that we're, that we have is that we need to be able to get some views from those buildings. And originally, we asked for, at the county level, I believe, we asked for 125 feet, and we, as I said, negotiated with Sea Ray and others and, and compromised at, at 95 feet, and that is seven stories of living over one story of parking. And, you know, let me tell you just a little bit about our company. We are a family-owned development company that's developed over 150 communities throughout the southeastern United States. Not one, single one of those is anything other than a high-quality project that I'm very proud of. That's what this project will be. It will be something that the City of Palm Coast is proud of, something that will be happy to put our name on, and I think something that ultimately the citizens will be glad came along. I, I, I just have to tell you that I'm surprised at the amount of, of sort of feedback I received in the last week or two, and in fact, I will acknowledge right now that I'm probably the most unpopular person in the room here. But it has, it, it has been a long process here, but we feel like we have done everything that we could possibly do to satisfy and to comply with, everything that we were required to satisfy and comply with. We did originally get the permits and entitlements in 2006. We amended only the single-family portion in 2006, starting in 2016, and then 2017 with the county. We, we never changed the multifamily height. We never asked for any changes or anything. That was, that was granted. Then we went about, talking about water and sewer with the city, and were told that we would have to annex, which I gladly agreed to do. I'm proud to be part of the City of Palm Coast. If I could go back and do another community a different way, I might have annexed that project as well. But, so we had no problems in, in annexing. I found everyone within the city very easy to work with, although rigorous in their demands, and, you know, I'll tell you that we, we felt, we felt really glad to be a part of the process and, and part of Palm Coast. In fact, if, had we not done that, we would have been under construction in this property six months sooner. So we chose to delay, to cost ourselves more money in, in things like design fees, engineering expenses, which at this point, totaling the hundreds of thousands of dollars on this property, we're paying more in property tax, et cetera, et cetera. But we did it all in a spirit of, of compliance to, so that we could do the annexation and, and become part of the City of Palm Coast. So I hope that, that the people here will take into the account the fact that there have been at least seven or eight public hearings about this. When you start at the county level and you go up to tonight, there's been at least seven or eight public hearings regarding this property, and they have had the opportunity to, to be at all of those, and I'm not sure why this sudden surge of, of concern is about this, about this property, but we feel like we're vested with our, our rights here, and that we know we're going...
I just, I need to interrupt you for a second, because let me tell you why we're surprised, okay? Just for an explanation, since you're familiar with our community, you'd be familiar that not one county commissioner that's serving today was on the county commission when this was approved in 2006. I was not on the county commission, and I served for six years. So yes, we had a downturn in the economy, but now you're looking at a brand-new council, two of which have been here for two years. So when that was approved by the city council, again, you're looking at a brand-new city council. So the surprise comes in when we have a height requirement or restriction that we knew nothing about. So those hearings took place outside this city. They took place in a different process entirely. So for you to be surprised, maybe you're not familiar with the government in Palm Coast or Flagler County, but that's our reality. It's okay. We're not going to, we're not going to do that. This is going to be very respectful and civil, but I do think it's important that you understand that there's been a lot of changeover politically during this time period. So when the frustration comes, and we set standards in our city that our residents have come to expect and understand when they move here, it's a surprise to each of us when we are restricted by state law and by county government preempting us by approving this, knowing that for you to receive water, any type of utility, you'd have to sign a pre-annexation agreement. So for you to be surprised, I'm surprised that you're surprised, quite frankly. And I don't say that with disrespect, quite frankly, because, again, I know you've gone through a long process, and I, I'm, I'm not anti-growth by any means, I'm not anti-growth on this entire corridor, but this, this has been a very staggering moment, certainly for me, when this first came to us, this last first reading, and that was the first I had ever seen of this height requirement. So that's where the surprise comes from.
Mayor Holland, with all due respect, though, what I'm referring to is the pre-annexation agreement. The entitlements for the property were included in the pre-annexation agreement, which was approved by this body, I think with two hearings.
The pre-annexation agreement?
Yes.
Let me maybe help out. Our pre-annexation agreement doesn't actually get into the details of the entitlements. It recognizes the state law that says that the counties, and I think it actually attaches the agreement to...
It attaches the PUD.
But, but it is a standard recognition that state law says that they get the same entitlements in the city as they do the county. If you don't include that, they still do. This isn't like you're giving them something special. This is just recognizing the state law. So...
But can I, the people who bought property around there knew what, what that was set at. That was already set, yes or no? What could be, that, that zoning was already set? Stop, please.
The height issue was established in Flagler County in 2006.
Okay, so, so anybody who was there after 2006, who would have investigated that, would have found that out?
Could, could have found that out.
We're not going to have a back and forth, please. Let Councilmember Nobile, please ask his questions. This is why we're here.
It's like, it's like any other, you know, you have vacant land there. I have no idea who knew it and who didn't. I can, all I can tell you is it was on public...
What I'm saying is the information was available.
Public record, yes. The, the PUD was approved in 2006.
See, this is what I, I, I'm going to say this, and I'm going to apologize upfront, but this is where I get a little concerned myself, is two, three weeks ago, we had the same conversation about a property down on US 1 in the, in the Z section there, and we did change the zoning, and we did change the comprehensive, the comprehensive plan for that area, and nobody had a problem with that. Now we're talking, and these are people who bought the property and said, this is what I'm getting, and we didn't fight for them. Now we're, we're sitting in an area where we're saying, okay, this is what this property can do, and now the developer wants to do it, and we're, we're, we're attacking, and I just don't think that's fair. Now, I personally, I would wish we could do this under Palm Coast ordinance, you know, under our, you know, but that can't be, is what I understand. Again, I'm not a lawyer, I don't, you know, but it's, to my understanding, it can't be changed by us at this point. So, you know, I don't want to attack these people who are coming here and, you know, to, to argue their point, or the developer, who, like you said, has gone through his due diligence and, you know, he's been through these processes. This is, you know, this is not new. This is something that's been in the works since 2006. So, you know, I just wanted to say that point. That's all. I'm sorry.
Well, my comments were not made to be an attack in any regard. I, I think I was very respectful.
I didn't mean that.
My concern, quite frankly, not with the development as a whole, not with anything to do with the residential, it really is the height that is very bothersome to me.
Right, exactly. And, and something we talked about is in the future, making sure we're not getting tied into this somehow, somehow. I mean, we could have denied the annexation or not gone with the annexation.
Well, if you denied the annexation, they would just...
Pay more for water and sewer.
Well, yeah, but we don't get the taxes, we don't get the impact fees.
No, no, I understand that.
They get all the, they get all the services, and the development occurs in Palm Coast, but we get no, no benefits, so...
Right.
So, you know, not, annexing has nothing to do with whether or not the development can take place, is, is...
No, what I'm saying is that's the only thing we had a say in.
Yes, exactly. But for the future. What's frustrating is we have a designated area. We have an agreement with Flagler County when it comes to water service areas, as to what areas will be annexed when they come in for development. And I think that was the mayor's main point, was a couple of weeks ago, is...
And we just did this.
We, we should, counties should be pointing them our direction early in the process. Now, that's not really, that's not fair to this one, because it was 2006, a long time ago.
And like the mayor said, it's a whole different...
As far as future discussion, we have others that are, they're going through the county process on State Road 100.
Right, and we just did this with the airport property, you know, where, where, you know, we want that in compliance, if anything happens with the ordinances of Palm Coast.
Right, and they're getting their entitlements, and then they'll come in and say, okay, here, city. So that's the frustrating part, and we're all very frustrated with that, and, and that if, within those boundaries, they would start with the city, so the city standards are met, City Council makes decisions, and, and based on our community and our standards, that's really what we're looking for in the future. This development, this developer got caught because, as he said, he actually started Palm Coast Plantation. Palm Coast Plantation got water from the private water company, and therefore, they're not in the city, the only neighborhood that's not in the city, in this whole area, because of past history. And this development was very close to that happening, but because of recession, they're now here today. So that's kind of what the background is. But I do think it's very important, and I know based on direction of City Council, our, our planning manager has already met with the planning manager at Flagler County to see if we can't come up with a mechanism, a legal mechanism, to make sure that these new developments that are still in unincorporated area, but in our urbanized area, come in early, so...
Good. If I could add, possibly, our company is very active in land acquisition currently in Flagler County. We have recently purchased property to build apartments on. We've recently purchased more single-family property. I hear you loud and clear about the height restriction. We certainly tend to comply with any of the Land Development Code and any of the restrictions related to heights in the future. So that's all I have tonight, but I would, if I could, re, maybe just ask for a time at the end if there are additional questions needed to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Procedurally, we open up to public comment unless there's any other questions by this council in advance?
Yes, Mayor, correct. Remember now, this is a, a two-step process, and you've asked me to read the title, which I did, of the first step, which is the land, the future land use map. That's in the nature of legislative, still a public hearing. The, the second matter, and, and honorable process is, is to allow one public hearing for the, the two steps, and I just want to make sure that the council understands and the public understands that, to the extent that they wish to comment on either one of them, the second item, is the application of, of zoning classification to this parcel comparable to the existing county zoning, and that zoning is PUD... And that zoning is PUD with a development agreement, and the request submitted is to MPD with a development agreement. That's the, the application of a comparable Palm Coast zoning classification, which is the second step in this. So, that's, that's where we are as far as procedurally, Mayor.
Thank you. Before I open up to public comment, I just wanna make it very clear, we have rules and procedures here, so we're asking everyone to be respectful. You have up to three minutes after you state your name. For the record, your three minutes will begin, but we ask that everybody be very civil. Please don't make comments. Please don't make noises throughout this. We're not asking for applause during speaker moments. It's just, it's a time for everybody to be heard throughout this process. We know that everyone's very passionate about this issue, as they are about many City of Palm Coast issues, and we wanna hear from each and every one of you, so it's important that we act with civility during this process. And just a couple, what Mr. Landon had depicted throughout this process, this has been a very frustrating process. You know, again, when, when we have agreements in place that are set forth many years ago with an understanding, we all remember the water wars many years ago. There was a lot of resolution that took place as far as county and city boundaries with water requirements. There was an understanding of who would be supplying those water to what areas, and it was ironed out in a very lengthy process, a legal process that started out as more of a receptive process. So, when these development agreements take place, it's difficult for the public to understand because it's a very technical process, not only by state law, but by local guidelines that restrict us oftentimes from our ability to make our own determinations and decisions within our governing body. So, what you're gonna hear tonight is a lot of that, is a lot of the, the mechanics that go behind state and local laws that guide our planning process. But, but again, we're looking forward to hearing from each and every one of you, so I'll open up public comment. I'll ask for the first speaker to come up to the podium. Please state your name for the record, and your three minutes will begin.
My name is Edith Farina, and I live about 25 feet from the proposed construction site of the two easternmost towers. What I'm hearing a lot tonight is that really legally, we don't, we can't argue this point because the PUD was approved back in 2006, et cetera, et cetera. But actually, I feel like we shouldn't even be having this meeting right now because our municipal code 3.04.02, Section H2, deals with the expiration of a PUD, and it says the applicant must begin and substantially complete the development of the planned unit within two years from the time of its final approval. So technically, this PUD was, had expired by 2008 because they did not substantially complete the PUD. This doesn't seem to matter. The developer excavated the marina with an expired building permit in 2014, and just three months ago, the area on the other side of the marina was deforested without a building permit. I live right there, and I noticed there was a stop-work order posted the next day. When I moved here in 2011, I could never have imagined the possibility of 95-foot-tall buildings behind my house. In fact, the real estate listing described the area behind my property as a preserve, as did the other listings of my neighbors. And technically, there is a preserve behind my house. It's that 25-foot buffer. In the meantime, Matthew and Irma have knocked down all the trees, so basically, I have 25 feet of sawgr, uh, palmetto, and then we have this deforested area, which is currently housing piles of dead trees. And last week, four barges were dumped there, rusting barges and other types of equipment. I'm here today because I'm putting my faith in my local government to uphold and enforce the laws, municipal codes, and the comprehensive plan of Flagler County. Flagler County Comprehensive Plan states that new development should be compatible with the design and environmental character of the area which is located. High-rise towers are clearly incompatible. Single-family homes surround them. At this point, however, I would welcome development behind my house because that site is an eyesore. As I said, it's deforested, it's, it's a parking lot for rusting equipment and the trees that have not been removed. So, development, even condos would be preferable for me, but not at that height. Two- or three-story condos, just like we see elsewhere in Palm Coast, would be just fine and would be compatible with the design and the environmental character of the area. High-rise condos directly behind homes will certainly be detrimental to property owners currently living there. 95-foot towers looming over our homes will certainly lower property values.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
I only have two comments. My name is Ronald Belzinski, and I live in Grand Haven. When I moved here in 2002, before all this took place, the builder at that time was talking about developing that property. At that time, there was a question of soil contamination due to the cement plant, and they said there was a problem removing it because it would cost too much money. Up to this date, I have never heard of anybody saying, "All that contaminated soil has been removed," or "Is it gonna be homes built on contaminated land?" Secondly, you put up those nine-story buildings. That's nice. They're looking at an empty lot now on that picture where a factory is sitting. Come time the people move in, we're gonna hear the same thing people do when they move near an airport. "Oh, we gotta move the airport, shut it down." They're gonna be screaming, "Shut down those 600, 700 jobs for those people because they don't wanna look at a factory and don't wanna smell the epoxy that goes into the boat manufacturing." I'm just wondering what this county and town board is gonna do when that point comes and you get 1,000 people signing up. We want them removed and condemned because we don't like looking at it. That's all I have to say. That's my opinion. It's up to you as what you do now.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker.
Good evening. For the record, Sarah Lockhart, 2 Marlin Drive, full disclosure, I used to work for you, and something caught my eye in the staff report. It says, "As specified in a pre-annexation agreement with the landowner, the proposed amendment will recognize and protect the existing entitlements granted into the subject property." Ira Corliss was the first economic development director for the city, and he used pre-annexation agreements extensively for economic development. And at some point, out of the attorney's office, rolled an opinion that pre-annexation agreements weren't worth the paper they were printed on because it binds a future board's hands, and you can't make a decision. Your police powers would be bound. So, the alternative to that, recognized by the courts, are called joint planning agreements. And I see nowhere in your intergovernmental comprehensive plan element a reference to pre-annexation agreements. There are references to joint planning agreements. There's also a reference to the utility service agreement. I would suggest that you ask your attorney for a full analysis, and don't rush him. This is a very complex area of the law, but there have been these annexation wars going on for a long time, and this is not the first rodeo. So, you know, the, there are alternatives, I think, available to this so that you don't get boxed in every single time. This has been going on in this county for a long time, but yet, your comprehensive plan lays out a process. So, in my opinion, what you're doing is not in concert, not consistent or compatible with your comprehensive plan. I also have a list of things that I am concerned about, and that is getting pedestrians across Roberts Road and Colbert Lane to the trails. There's no sidewalks that I can see that have been proposed. This is also a gateway area that's called out in your comprehensive plan. I think the landscape buffer should match the other landscape buffers that are farther north than the other projects. I think Grand Haven's is 25 feet. I think this might be 20 feet. I think there should be restriction on the size of the units, and, and the minimum of 1,200 square feet for this project, only a certain amount could be built at that. The other point that's being raised is that they need the views. There are two condominium buildings left to be built in Hammock Dunes. If I've got the money to live here, I've got the money to live there, and I'm gonna move there because I've got an unobstructed view of the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Everyone who wants to speak, if you guys wanna start lining up, that might make it a little bit more efficient, so you don't have to wait.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Councilman, and talented staff who often get overlooked. I want to, I want to remind all of you first what beauty lies in the crossing of Route 100 Bridge when you go over that. You're looking at the intracoastal waterway, you're looking at the ocean waves, and you're looking at our quaint little Flagler Beach Village. There is nothing more special than trying to preserve that, and as you, as you cast your eyes out and you see that view, there's only one eyesore that catches your attention. And that single eyesore is a huge, multi-story building that is residential and has been there forever, and it's something we all wish were not there, but it's there, and, and we have to suffer with it. We have an opportunity not to let more blight occur. These five, eight-story buildings, this is, the height was approved, what is it now, eight years ago? We, we don't have to suffer that. We truly, truly don't. And I believe that the growth of the county is not impeded if we modify that height restriction a little bit, and I think it calls for imaginative governmental officials, officials beyond just this room, but probably at the county level, to look at that again and see what sort of sanity we could inject in a decision made so long ago. I think that is the solution that we need to be pushing for, and I think there are a lot of people in this room tonight who would agree with me on, on my heartfelt observations. And I would just ask that all of you who do stand now to show your support.
No, sir, sir, sir.
Oh, you can't do that?
We don't do that.
Oh, what a shame, what a shame. I'll stop at that point. You have 52 seconds. I'm returning to you. Please don't let this happen to us. It need not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm Andy Germain. I live in Palm Coast Plantation on Riverwalk Drive. Have two comments. One is, I oppose the height. It would, it would be atrocious to look at these very tall buildings in that community. So, I'm with everybody else who agrees on that. The other question is Harborview Drive. Right now, Palm Coast Plantation has two gates onto Harborview Drive. We like that. We'd like to continue that. I don't know if this body has jurisdiction over that. Can we be assured that we will continue to have access, ingress, and egress through Harborview Drive? So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Kathy Royker-Dolavsky. I live at 88 Front Street in Grand Haven, and I moved here in January of 2017, so this information that's come before me in the last couple of months is new, even though there have been previous public hearings. The citizens of Palm Coast would like to see development projects that preserve our sense of place.
Just move, move back a little bit from the mic. That's okay.
Right here, okay. We'd like to see development projects that preserve our sense of place, which includes low-density buildings, not higher than four stories. The 2006 Flagler County approval of five nine-story buildings in a project along Colbert Lane now to be known as Marina Del Palma is not consistent with this goal. Although lawful under Flagler County Building Guidelines, the recent annexation of this parcel located in unincorporated Palm Coast into the city limits creates a conflict. We are asking that the developer work with city officials to find a compromise, and I appreciate your background information to let us know that compromises have already been made in reducing the height. However, we'd like to find a way that you could somehow satisfy your needs for density while preserving the visual landscape for the residents in the area. From the reading that I have done about land use planning, I have learned that buildings with a height of five to six stories represent a, quote, "human scale," meaning that the inhabitants of these buildings relate more easily to activities taking place on the ground. Buildings seven stories and above are considered to be more urban because of their verticality, and the occupants of the upper floors of these buildings relate more to the sky than to the earth. Several projects are proposed for unincorporated Palm Coast, which are likely to be annexed into the city, and this height issue is going to have far-reaching implications. We ask that you please help preserve our sense of place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name's Sally Faulkner, and today is the one-year anniversary of my moving into Flagler County. Obviously, I didn't know anything previously about this development or would have been more involved. I have just a couple of questions. One is, I'm not understanding something in the Flum Amendment because there are changes being made to this development from the Flagler County approvals. You reduced the number of houses, and also, apparently, the square footage of the commercial buildings that would go in can be increased. So, you've got changes approved. Why is the height of the buildings not available for changing? My second question speaks to policy number 1133 that talks about transitional areas and buffers for developments like this that are significantly different from the surrounding development. Not only do we have the rural nature of Palm Coast Plantation, but we have an agricultural area with the fine development there. We have Sea Ray, an industrial area. Those are significantly different from these, and my question is, what type of transitional buffer is appropriate for that change? If those buildings have to exist, why can't something be done to make them more directly fit in with the land state instead of standing out the way they do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Mike Dellerson. I live in Palm Coast Plantation. I came up to Flagler County a few years ago, a refugee from South Florida. The condo canyons down there were no longer, you know, a place I wanted to live near. I think a lot of people in this room, whether they came from South Florida or from the Northeast or the Midwest, would feel the same. I know your hands are somewhat tied by the decisions that were made by the county, but I would ask that, since the state seems to be the one that's behind all of this and has your hands tied, that there be some appeal or some process to the state so that we could, you know, amend what apparently seems unstoppable. Also, you know, 10 years ago, when the condo was being conceived, there were no other projects along Colbert and Roberts. I think a lot of people in this room would be surprised that not only will this have 600 condo units, but just to the south will be the Lighthouse Harbor, 600-unit setup. They're complying, by the way, so far with the height requirement. Further south toward the Moody Boulevard, there's a 1,500 condo community being planned, which I believe will be annexed into the City of Palm Coast. So, we're looking at several thousand condo units now. There's no shortage of condominium space in the southeast corner of Flagler County, and I think that that needs to be, you know, considered also. At one point in time, maybe there wasn't enough condo space, and you needed to go up, but for the sake of a few extra stories, it will be 50 years that we'll have to look at those towers, and I don't think that this council would wanna take responsibility if there's anything that can be done to amend it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Before I get started, I would just like to address Mr. Noble's comment that he made earlier. All of the lots in Palm Coast Plantation, all 643, were sold prior to 2004 because when I went in to buy my properties, I had to buy resales. I couldn't buy anything that was actually still there, so none of this we were aware of prior to buying our properties. Now, it was a long time before we built homes, as you know, because of the economy that we had there. Mayor Holland, council members, I've always been of the belief that Palm Coast vision has... vision has been to be the best coast. And I think everybody here would, would like to see that. Um, I live in Palm Coast Community. We have no condos in our midst right now. And, and I understand that they're going to be coming. And I consider myself to be a fair and reasonable person. I had forty-one years of a state government, so, you know, I know how to deal with a lot of things. Um, I would like to petition you, but more so, I'd like to petition Mr. Belshi, if he could just have the heart to work with everyone here. We're not looking to, to take down the whole project, though, you know, some of us would probably feel that way. But he has a right to do it there. What we're just asking for is just to minimize the height down to, I believe it's a fifty-foot height requirement within the city, to comply with everything else that's here. You don't really have to look any further, as was stated before, than across the river to know exactly what it's going to look like when you put it there. I mean, I came over the bridge this morning, and I'm looking out there, and I don't see much. We're gonna, we're definitely going to see that when, if that occurs out there. And that sets a, sets a precedent. Um, this council, I think, is going to be remembered forever for, for changing things today. We hope it will be changed in the right direction. Um, I don't think you want your legacy to be the ones that made the decision to move forward with this, even though we know it's a bad idea. There should be some way to find out how to make it good. I believe that most of our citizens within the entire area would prefer to keep our low-rise one with nature appearance in Palm Coast. Across the street, the subdivision, you have a four-thousand-acre park that was preserved over there for this very thing. You also have the Lehigh Trail that comes out right at that particular area. This is our city beautiful here. Surely this council wants to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Debbie Malley. I also live in Palm Coast Plantation. One thing I want to point out is where you have all that green area there, that's actually homes. People live along that way in those tall condos. The people who live in those are going to see the people in their front yards and their backyards. They'll have no privacy. So I'm saying if the person who developed Palm Coast Plantation already is aware that those condos are going to be looking in people's yards, and people are not going to have any privacy in their front yards or their backyards. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll take a closed comment. We'll go question by question. It will either be for our attorney or for Mr. Landon. Um, to the fact of the first speaker, um, going back to the expiration date within their municipal codes of two thousand and eight from the original approval, um, can you speak to if this development still exists and is approved by the dates?
Yes. I, well, I can't speak to whether the two thousand and six, um, uh, action expired, but I can tell you that the two thousand and seventeen is still very active. I mean, once again, county commissioners, what we're dealing with now is what they approved in two thousand and seventeen. So that is active. If the previous, uh, action back in two thousand and six expired, it's really a moot point or irrelevant.
So if it came to the county commission in two thousand and seventeen and they approved, would they have to go through the whole new process again if it was expired?
It's my understanding they did exactly that.
They went through the brand-new process?
Yes.
How did it go through the process?
No, no.
If I, if I could, Mayor, we are tonight in control of our own process. What we're not in control of is what happened previously with the county. Certainly, I was not aware of exactly what happened in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. I will tell you that under the, the rules of procedure, legal rules of procedure, if there was a flaw in the process that the county enacted in, in renewing or re-adopting or, or amending the PUD, that would have had to have been challenged within thirty days from the rendition of that development order. If that occurred more than thirty days ago, then, then they've got a vested right in that development order from the county. And that development order is, um, obviously an amendment to the county comprehensive plan, as well as, uh, apparently a change in, in the development order, which was the zoning designation that was received in the county, which was for PUD with the development agreement. Again, that is not something that we have any control over. We simply are receiving the application for annexation. It was annexed into the city, and now we have to give it a comparable land use, which is a, a Flum Amendment, and we have to apply a comparable, um, zoning classification, not a rezoning, but a comparable zoning classification to that which was obtained in the county.
As far as, um, just talk about vested rights, since you're up, Mr. Reichman, I'll, I'll go to you as far as an, an appeal process and what that looks like in the state, and if there's any remedy that we could apply to the law, our local laws, that would give us the ability, um, to make a request to the state at all.
The request, uh, any request to relitigate Flagler County's development orders would have to go to the courts, not to the legislature. And those would have to be done pursuant to a specific timeframe and a timeline. And that, uh, the, 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 uh, the future land use designation that comes to us from the county was given to this property, and, and I don't know the date. The developer would certainly have a better information about that than I have. I'm going, it has to be more than thirty days ago.
Early two thousand and seventeen.
Early two thousand and seventeen. So the process, Mayor, is that if there was a, uh, an, an argument that was to be made, that, that, that that future land use designation or that zoning was either inconsistent with the, the Flagler County Land Development Code, or, or it's incompatible with its comprehensive plan, then the, the vehicle that would have been, uh, challenged that within thirty days to the Circuit Court in Flagler County. Uh, that is pursuant to Chapter one-sixty-six, one-sixty-three, and those are Florida statutes, and, and that's, and that's, as well as the Florida Rules of Appellative Procedure, and that's what would control.
As far as, um, them already constructing things and stopping with permits that was done under the county?
Yes, um, exactly. Now, some of the comments, uh, were made. It leads me to believe it's actually the Marina Project, which is right on the, well, basically across the canal. It's on the corner of Colbert Lane and Robert Road, where the old cement mill was located and where the, uh, the smoke stack is still, is still located. That is not this property. That is a different property owner. That is a different project. That also was approved for, uh, residential and Marina, uh, through Flagler County, I believe the same timeframe. Uh, and it is currently still unincorporated. It is not within the city. Uh, they're in the same boat, uh, that when they want to come in and develop and, and get water, we will require annexation. But they will once again bring with them the county, uh, vested rights that they have with whatever zoning that the county approved.
Let's, we, um, uh, Ms., so the, the soil contaminants that CKD does, that was?
That is actually, um, cement and then south of, of Roberts Road, is my understanding. I have not heard of any, uh, issues with contamination on this property.
We have not. It's south of this property where they did the assessment, BP.
Uh, Ms. Lockhart's comments, um, can you speak to the joint planning agreement analysis compatible with Colbert Lane, landscape buffer twenty feet, restriction of size of units?
The, um, the, the joint, uh, agreement with Flagler County is very consistent. What we're saying is that, that's exactly what we'd like to see, is some type of agreement that says that instead of having to go through this pre-annexation and, and the like, that they would, uh, uh, direct those developers directly to the city. Uh, buffers and the other, I'm going to have to refer to Ray or Jose. And maybe our attorney can help you out with it.
Mayor, let me, let me, um, remind you and, and the council of a brief discussion that we had when this came before all of us for the first reading. And, and Mayor, you indicated your concern with regard to our planning standards, uh, with, without regard to our land development code. And at that time, I, I mentioned to you that, that, you know, there's things that we can do in the future that hopefully would prevent the frustration that everyone in this room feels this evening. And, and that is, is that, and as, as the speaker indicated, when you can get through some sort of inter-local agreement, a joint planning standards, where within a geographical area where it's agreed in that inter-local agreement, where the parties, the two different local governments agree, that within that scope, there's a, there's a, an area outside of the ci- a city, but limited somewhere and unincorporated, that when someone has real property in that, that ring around a local, around a municipality, and seek a development order from, from the county, that the county would agree pursuant to this inter-local agreement to apply the standards, the development standards of that city, because it's anticipated by that inter-local agreement and agreed to by the unincorporated, by the county, that this is going to be within that, that city eventually. And so it should develop according to that city's standards. And those, those types of, of planning agreements, correct term, joint planning agreements, can prevent the type of discussions and problems that we're having this evening. So yes, a joint planning agreement is something that I think all of us would, would, and I, from listening to the city manager's earlier comments, there have already been efforts made by our staff to do just that and go to, um, uh, Flagler County and to try to open that dialogue.
Well, and, and anything we can do from our perspective, I, I think we just need to, to support this idea and concept, um, uh, in a, in a more meaningful way, not just wait and have a few meetings and see what comes out of it, but really, um, hopefully set some timeframes where we can accomplish this. And if there's any roadblocks that do occur, I think it's important for us as a council to understand what those are, um, as we progress, um, so we can communicate with our colleagues on the Board of County Commissioners, uh, in a way to let them know our concerns as we move forward.
And Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not like this is something that would have to be created out of whole cloth. I mean, right now, uh, the city has a planning area for purposes of providing utilities, water and sewer. And that's a, that's a specific geographical area, which, as the city manager, manager had indicated, at some point in time, the properties, the, the real property that's in that area, in order to obtain city services, utility services, uh, is required to annex in. So that's the, that's the kind of geographical area that I'm, that I'm speaking of, that since, since that is a, a legal, you know, the, the city of Palm Coast had the legal right to establish that. It's established that. That would be a starting point with Flagler County saying, okay, this is going to be in, this, this real, this undeveloped real property is going to be eventually in the city of Palm Coast. We're going to work with you, Palm Coast, so that this is developed in the future according to your standards.
I'm confused about one thing. Um, the same speaker said, so what she said was, and I think the mayor said it also, is we did limit the number of dwellings, and we did, I'm, I'm, uh, this is what was said, and we limited the size, I believe. So the question kind of was like, well, if we can do that.
Once again, um, as long as the property owner agrees.
Okay, so, so the dwelling number?
Right.
If it's different than that agreed with this, with the county, would have to simply just be agreed by?
That is correct.
The developer. Okay.
In other words, even if, even if our, in this case, comp plan allowed more units, we limited it so it's no more than what the county approved.
Or vice versa. Right. Okay. Good. Okay. Got it.
Okay. Um, uh, the gentleman spoke, and I don't believe it's in our jurisdiction. Palm Coast Plantation has not annexed into the city and has no plans of doing so. So about the roadway?
The, um, well, the, the second entrance in and out is the entrance in and out of this development. Uh, and, uh, it's my understanding that all those, that has worked, been worked out. But Ray, I'm going to let you, uh, address the, the access issue, kind of the southern access issue.
Yeah, um, I know we had discussions with, with the developer, and I, you know, we have some language where they will continue to work with the Palm Coast Association to try to make that happen. Um, and I don't know where they are on those discussions with them, but they, the developer did provide me a commitment that they're going to do everything they can to work with the association, who's going to maintain it and those type of details.
What about the buffer?
The buffer is not twenty. It's twenty-five feet off of Colbert Lane.
Which is our standard.
All of that is consistent.
And, and by the way, the, the access we're talking about is one-way. It, it doesn't allow this development to go into Palm Coast Plantation. It just allows Plantation traffic to go through this development. So that's why it's really between the two of them. And Plantation, uh, Palm Coast Plantation roads are private. They are owned by the HOA or CDD, whatever organization maintains those. They're not city.
Is the, the, uh, walkover or the, uh, what, one of the speakers, I mean, that is, Colbert Lane is a county road. Do we have any jurisdiction over when we add capacity or we annex in capacity, what that means to ensuring the safety of those residents that are crossing it?
Right. Because it is a county road, it will require their, uh, approval for any changes. This is, this access is already there, so I don't know that that will be a whole lot of difference. As far as, uh, access, pedestrian access, it's excellent point. I think we need to, when we see the, that's a site plan, uh, not, not a zoning or a comp plan. Uh, but people are going to want to get from this development over to the trail system, uh, along Colbert Lane and then obviously Lehigh Trail. So we need to address that with the developer is the best way to, if it's crosswalks or whatever.
And the one resident had said that there was, um, it was twenty-five feet from the back of her house. Is there a bigger buffer from, I know you said from Colbert Lane, but from someone's backyard, twenty-five feet?
I, I don't know if you all can.
Building is. I don't know. What's in the PUD?
Yeah, it's, it's, what's in a PUD agreement? I, I don't know exactly, because it's a lot, and I don't know the exact distance from the single-family lot to, to the building itself. The developer may, may have that answer. I don't know exactly. Just step back from there.
This is on page three of the development agreement, Mr. Tyner, and it's bottom page three. It says, "All setbacks will be measured from the adjacent boundary line or roadway easement to the nearest point of the dwelling structure unless otherwise noted below." Remember, now, this is the development agreement that was approved by, by, by Flagler County. Side is ten feet from the side property line, front is twenty-five, and the rear is twenty-five from the rear lot line or ten feet from any conservation easements, whichever is greater. Is that, those are, those are the numbers. Obviously, as far as how that works out on the ground, will be a, a site plan?
That, that sounded like single-family. I don't know if that's relevant.
Well, there, there's a lot there, a big lot for the, for the multifamily pads. And I don't know from the building, they'll have to have that twenty-five, that, that setback from, from the conservation area. That's to the east, but I don't know exactly where the building's going to be. I don't have those details.
We don't have a site plan. We don't have the, the development plans at this point. So you're really getting into site plans and development plans that are, are beyond, uh, what, what we've seen to this date.
Remember now, a, a PUD is, 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 it's a mix. It's, it's a, it's a zoning classification, but it also is a specific zoning classification for a particular parcel. And it's usually mixed use. And that's why you have a development agreement that provides for some of the details that you're not going to find generally in a, in a, in a zoning. And it's going to have a little bit more detail than you sometimes would find in a plat or you're going to find in, in a site plan. And this development agreement is not that unusual. It contains some of that specificity. And so to the extent that it does, that has to, that, this development is going to have to be built by the developer consistent with that. They're not going to be able to, to make it, uh, you know, shorter lots, shorter setbacks, that sort of thing. Now, the height is obviously the main issue here tonight. I, I get that. And that's in, that's in the development agreement as well.
Um, a lot of the other comments had to do, obviously, with the beauty of Palm Coast, the high quality of life, the high standards, going over the bridge. Um, I, I think we're, you know, in complete agreement as far as what we value here in Palm Coast. Um, I think what we've heard tonight is, uh, an unfortunate set of circumstances that have us in a situation that we're very much limited on our ability to, um, even negotiate any changes other than just requesting. Um, but there's no law governing us to force the hand of the developer in this, uh, element or this discussion. So, um, council, I'll just ask for any comments or questions.
I just want to say that if, if the developer could change, I know we've had developers before that have come back with different plans, and they've made buildings lower or made bigger buffers. If, if you could, if you would, I, I know it's a big money thing for you, but building around a bunch of people that aren't happy that you're there isn't a good idea either. Maybe you could relook at it and bring us different plans. I know it's just hoping, but maybe.
I appreciate that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
This is the second read of, of ordinance, agenda item G3, which is amending the future land use map from the county designation to city of Palm Coast designation.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to agenda item number G4, Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City Council of City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map, as established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the zoning designation for approximately 109 acres, more or less, from Flagler County designation of planned unit development PUD, City of Palm Coast master plan development MPD, with a development agreement which is exhibit C to the, to the, the ordinance. Subject, the subject property is more particularly described in exhibit A and graphically depicted in exhibit B to the ordinance, it provides for conflict severability from effective date.
Mayor, City Council, the, this is a companion zoning for your previous comp plan amendment. We have no additional comments, all the comments that staff, myself, attorney made during the previous item are relevant to this one too.
Mayor, this is a public hearing, this is quasi judicial, so if there have been any ex parte communications made or received since the first reading, those need to be disclosed at this time.
Just emails from residents?
Those emails will become part of the record and, and, and will be forwarded to the, to the city clerk to make sure they are part of the public record. Obviously, if there are any additional comments by the public, Madam Mayor, those should be received at this time. And I do believe that the, the developer did request, if they still wish to have some time at the end of the, the public hearing on this matter for answering questions or whatever they want to use with their, do with their time.
Okay, council, any questions or comments before I open to the public? Do you remember the public wish to make public comment on agenda item number G4? Please do so at this time.
Good evening, for the record, Sarah Lockhart, 2 Marlin Drive, if I'm going to come out of retirement, I'm going to make this good, so bear with me. Some of these comments relate to, or similar to the other ones. It's my understanding that the minimum square footage of one of the condominium units could be 650 square feet, is that correct?
Not, not in this case, it's 1,200.
Okay, is the other one 600 square feet, 650?
Yeah, yes.
Oh darn, because 650 square feet, when you get out in your car tonight, that's basically four parking spaces. And what I was looking at is if we can limit the number of minimum square footage units so you don't have a disproportionate amount. You know, the, the people on the top floor typically don't mix well, unfortunately, with the people on the bottom floor, and you know, the people that are in the smaller units have a, a different perception from the people that have the top floors. I was also concerned whether or not this could become a timeshare and if the city's rental policy could be included in the homeowner association documents, one of these looks like it might be some kind of an apartment building. Commercial uses that generate high traffic volumes such as gas station and fast food restaurants should be listed as excluded because you want those uses down where the transportation network is already in place with traffic lights and things like that in order to support that. The other thing too, is why not have on the Roberts Road piece that has the commercial, why not have commercial on the ground floor with residential above? Somewhere along the line, Americans started eating out more, paying more to eat out than go to the grocery store. So to me, this would be in recognition of that future lifestyle change. And one of the biggest draws of living in Palm Coast appears to be ignored on the conceptual site plan for this project, and that is connections, connections, connections to Wadsworth, to Lehigh Trailhead. Colbert Lane right now is 55 miles an hour, I'm not that fast, you know, maybe we need to lower the speed limit, talk to the county about it. Can the clubhouse be designed as a hurricane shelter so that residents can shelter in place? The Benel Shelter, which most of us in here go to, was over, is over capacity during Hurricane Matthew, reached capacity at Hurricane Matthew and Irma. On this one, I couldn't tell if there was adequate turning lanes that had been, adequate land area for turning lanes that had been set aside. To me, that should not infringe upon the buffer, the turn lanes should be done and not infringe upon the 25-foot buffer, thank you for that. And again, gateway, 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 what are we doing to increase the perception in the drive down Colbert Lane? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
John Nett's, Palm Coast resident, Ms. Shipley, I hope your plea doesn't fall on deaf ears, there certainly is always room for negotiation. My suspicion is that this was approved in 2006, and the current county commission felt an obligation to pursue what their predecessors had done. All five county commissioners live in the incorporated city of Palm Coast. It's not enough to say, well, we should pursue joint planning organizations, joint planning agreements, we need to do that, we need to push forward. Whether or not we can modify this project to meet the residents' desires, I don't know, but we can certainly take steps, you can certainly take steps with your colleagues at the county to be sure that this doesn't happen again. I would urge you, I would implore you, I would beg you, insist on a meeting with the county. Once upon a time, this city council and the county commission met on a regular basis, that hasn't happened recently, but if you can meet with them and explain the issues that our residents face, and let's face it, if you look at the numbers, 85,000 in Palm Coast, 106 in the county, we are their residents also, and I think we need to explain to them what it's like to be in Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
My name is Bill Desmond, I live in Palm Coast Plantation. Looking at the five co-op city-type buildings here, I'm thinking about fire protection. I think the city council should start thinking about buying an awful lot of new fire equipment that's built to fight fires in a, in a nine-story building. I don't know whether the developer will be sharing the cost of that or actually paying for all the new apparatus that has to be acquired, all the training that has to be done for the fire department, but it's a very serious cost, something that you folks should be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker. Okay, we'll close public comments. To the first speaker, Ms. Lockhart, I, I do actually have a question, because we do not want to get into a vacation rental issue in the city of Palm Coast, we currently do not deal with that, but having been on the county commission for six years and understanding the impact it had in a residential community was dramatic, to say the least, it really had a negative impact. This is the type of area that could actually be a viable short-term vacation rental network just because they like that sort of condensed condo quality of life living. So I want to know exactly what the plans are in regards to that.
Did, was that addressed in the county's PUD or anything we've added or anything?
No, sir.
Mayor, there is, there was also a reference to an association, there's the bottom page eight, there is a paragraph about covenants and restrictions which indicates that, that the property shall be governed by a declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions. I'm unaware whether such draft covenants have already been prepared and/or submitted to or reviewed or approved by the county, they're not attached as an exhibit, there shall be a master homeowners association, there may be sub-associations for the various neighborhoods, developers can be responsible for recording the documents. I, I can tell you, in the course of my, my practice representing many homeowners and condominium associations, the issue of, of, the type, types of usages can be dealt with very, very clearly in the covenants and restrictions for, that ultimately are crafted by this developer and imposed on the purchasers. It's like a contract on the purchasers of, of the units in the single-family portion of this development as well as in, as well as in the multifamily.
Question for the developer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if the developer could please come up and answer that, please?
On the short-term rentals, since the issue's not addressed in the PUD agreement.
Sir, if you could give your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis Baer, I'm legal counsel for the developer on this project, we'd be bound by whatever the city ordinances are on short-term rentals.
I don't have a short-term rental ordinance.
And we may need one.
Well, if this gets approved, we, they preempt.
Well, it's going that way, I mean, we, we're getting a lot of multi-unit development going and.
Well, again, Mayor, Council, there's a couple of different ways to skin the cat. There's one way, which is, which is legislative by, by providing some sort of ordinance, but of course, we've got issues with the legislature stepping into that area and preemption. The other way is, is with these covenants and restrictions, there can be imposed upon any purchasers a limitation on what they're allowed to, to use their units for, whether, whether it be.
By the developer?
Yeah.
So Mr. Baer, we're asking if your developer's willing to put that within the language of the covenants and restrictions.
I'll have to ask him, I mean, this wasn't an issue that's come up in any of the hearings before, so it wasn't back in '06, it certainly wasn't an issue, but I can certainly inquire on that issue.
I mean, so today, if I wanted to put my house on Airbnb, you know, rent it weekly, there's no issue, I can do that.
Yep.
And you're saying that it's easier for the developer of a, of a, of a PUD or MPD to create an agreement with the buyers than it is for the city to implement?
They're called deed restrictions.
Yeah.
And they, and they exist in the nature of a contract.
Right.
And when you buy your, your home, you buy, whether it's a single-family home or a multifamily unit, you buy it subject to this contract.
Well, before your question came up, I think the developer was standing to hopefully comment on something.
Hi, let me go back to one thing real quick, the minimum size of these condo buildings is 1,200 square feet, it's not 650 square feet, that's clear in the PUD. Regarding the short-term rentals, we have no plans to do short-term rentals, we have no, we've not discussed that with anybody, we have no.
No, please.
I mean, and again, I thought we were talking about height restrictions, but, or height, height problems, but, you know, the development business is, is different from others, we, we may be the, the developer that builds these buildings and we may partner with some other company in the future, or we may sell the property to somebody else in the future, and I don't think it would be fair to ask us to restrict what we're going to do beyond what the, what the city allows or does not allow.
And this is where I run into the issue, this is not being a good partner when you're coming to us and asking for some type of agreement that we're working towards, knowing that you're going to have future projects that you come before us, we do not want that type of industry in our community that's wreaking havoc because you look to the north of us in unincorporated county and they are, they are having this exact issue where they're having 40 people in a condo unit during, during race week next to a residential area, and there's parties going on till four in the morning, there is loud music and it's causing disruption in a residential area. Vacation rentals have a place, and I'm not opposed to vacation rentals, what I'm opposed to is vacation rentals in a residential area that is meant to be residential.
I understand, and what I'm saying is, can the city not impose those laws or restrictions based on the process in the city to do that? I'm only asking to allow us to comply with what everyone else complies with.
If I, if I may, the fact of it is, is the state has basically preempted cities once again because of the.
That's what I'm asking for, an accommodation, so.
So, I'm not, I'm not so sure, we haven't really looked at it in a great deal, but they're constantly reducing the authority of, of cities to control those, so it, it seems to me like, you know, you want to sell lots and houses, you have, you should have no desire to actually get into the rental business or to sell a house to somebody that's in the rental business.
I do not have any desire to be in that business.
So, it, it seems to me like this is not an unreasonable request to just agree that in your HOA covenants and restrictions will say that you will not have short-term rentals, we're talking about rentals of a week, you know, we're not talking about snowbirds that, you know, you might be able to rent to somebody who's going to stay here, you know, six months. The, the issue here is, you know, and it is, it's Bike Week, it's, it's Race Week, it's let's go to the beach and have a great time for, for, boy, it used to be college, what do they call, you know, spring break. That's what, and, and the concept is, is this actually protects your investment, and whether that's your investment as a developer or your investment as a new homeowner, but that's really what the, the request is, is trying to protect investment.
I, I understand the request, and I'm really not trying to be unreasonable, I promise you I'm not, but I would ask the question, you know, we had a lot of people in here tonight from Palm Coast Plantation, are those units currently or will they be restricted from short-term rentals?
Yes.
Sir, sir, let me.
And that has nothing to do with the city.
Let me, let me try to respond as much as I can, I don't have all the information. There's two different ways potentially, folks in the unincorporated area, and this is Palm Coast Plantation, I believe, is the, in unincorporated area of, of Flagler County, if there are any zoning restrictions in the land development code for Flagler County that would prohibit single-family homes from this type of activity, then that could be a, a way that, that they would not be able to use, so use their homes. But more likely is that there is something in their covenants and restrictions that would be enforced by their homeowners association, which would place a, a deed restriction on, on, on just single-family use, and, and probably more specifically, and I know you're a developer, so you're aware of this, it happens very commonly in all HOAs and most, most condominiums, is there, there provides a contract, a term in there, that it can't be rented for less than some period of time.
Correct.
It's not uncommon for it to be 12 months or, or, or seven months or, or some reasonable period of time. And if that was included in the covenants and restrictions for the master association, which is referenced in your, in your PUD, as well as any sub-associations, I think that would solve the problem that we're trying to solve today.
And I would say, talk to Gary Lubai, the president of Canopy Walk Homeowners Association, and he will tell you the problem they had with short-term rentals within Canopy Walk. It became such an issue that they had to change their entire restrictions due to the fact that during Bike Week, you had 20 motorcycles coming in, and again, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals and families coming down and enjoying the beach, but this has turned into a business, a very lucrative business for those that don't reside in our community and frankly, don't have to hear the impact that it creates in our residential areas. This is a residential area, this is not a commercial area, there are certain commercial aspects of it, but what we're looking at for the approval of these mid-rises, high-rises, whatever you're calling them, it really does change the dynamic. I mean, again, you speak to others that have had this issue where they build these very nice condos and they're selling for a, a nice, you know, rate, but at the same time, they allowed those in there and it just, it wreaked havoc in the entire condo community.
I, I, if I may, I, I think we have to look at this on both sides. I understand what, what the developer's saying is, and, and I'm, I'm 100%, you know, I'm a diehard conservative, and it's like, how do you restrict one person without, I mean, so I'm in the middle of a residential area and I can rent my house to 20 people for a week, so why would we impose that on him? However, on our side, please, I'm talking, on our side and on these people's side is they don't want that, and we don't want that in our neighborhood. I agree with this discussion, but I do not agree in public having this discussion. I think this is a discussion that needs to occur between our administration and the developer on this, because we're starting to put people, we're starting to create good and bad people here, and I don't like that in, in public like this, because he doesn't have to do it and we can't tell him he has to do it, so let's get off this public and let's, let's let the administration handle it so that they can discuss it, and if they work something out, that's, that's wonderful. But, you know, we constantly say this, how can we tell one group, you can do this in an. How can we tell one group, "You can do this," and another group, "You can't"? Unfortunately, I'd like to say, "You can't," period, throughout, you know, across the city, but we can't do that either because the state has preempted us in saying, "We can't do that." So, we have to look at, you know, we have to look at this on an individual basis, one-to-one. You know, so every development, we have to have this kind of communication with the developer to say, "Look, I see you're building multi-house units, and, you know, we prefer that, we don't allow..." What can we do, you know, what can we do to get there?
Well, short-term rentals, I mean, I was involved with this issue, so I've studied this issue across the state of Florida. They exist in more of a resort-type area than they do residential. That's why Hammock Beach has such an issue with it, that's why Canopy Walk. The Airbnbs, they're normally renting to the family that perhaps is coming in for one of our lacrosse games. They're looking at staying in a house rather than a hotel. And we don't see as much of an issue with 20 people renting a place like that.
Yes, you're right. And there are certain events that drive, but I know in the Hammock, on Cinnamon Beach, you can rent a house for a week, you know. I mean, I'm just kind of sitting here, and I don't, it's like, it's like the tall buildings. I don't like the idea, but I don't, we can't punish somebody because we don't like the idea if it's all done legitimately and it's already been agreed upon. Same thing here. I don't like imposing and picking and choosing who can, who can't. Now, we can't do that, we're not, but I don't want to, I don't like, and I'm saying this nicely, okay? I don't like hearing, "If you want to do business with us," you know, and let me be real technical on that. I don't mind it being said, I don't like it being heard, okay? Understand what I'm saying? Okay.
Keep it behind closed doors. Nobody will hear what's going on.
Madam Mayor, and Mr. Nobel, I just want to reiterate. We come here tonight with a development agreement that arguably has, creates vested rights. And one of the specifics in that was the height, and that's been the core of the issue tonight. And so, we are legally obligated to provide a land use, which is consistent with the county land use, and we are required to apply a zoning classification that's consistent. And the PUD has attached to a development agreement. And there is nothing in the development agreement that specifically limits the use such to your objective, Mayor. For better or for worse, and I'm going to say this out loud. If we could tell these folks that they can't have timeshare, if we could legally do that, we could tell them that they can't have a building more than 40 feet.
No, I'm understanding that. I'm not naive to this whole process.
I understand.
I've been doing this for 15 years. What I'm telling you is I'm requesting that he considers this moment and actually acknowledges that there might create an issue in this moment. I'm not picking and choosing, I'm just saying, I've been doing this for a long time, and we haven't had a development like this come before us that concerned me so much to the point to where we're allowing, because we have to by that law, but we are asking and requesting as a recommendation that we don't want to become and fighting in Tallahassee and just spending $300,000 to do it because we've created another issue in this community when we have the ability to ask very nicely, "Please, don't allow this to happen." That's all I'm asking. I'm not mandating it, I'm not requiring it as part of future development rights. I'm simply requesting as a gesture, because I've been through this road, and I've seen what it has created in communities. And I do not want to be sitting up here, knowing that this has happened, knowing it's happened right to our neighbors, and allowing it to happen under my leadership. That's what I'm saying.
And Mayor, that's why I suggested that, that I thought there was a fairly straightforward tool to solve that problem, which was covenants and restrictions. Could we clearly define right now what short-term rental is?
I mean-
Yeah, and the fact of it is, is that, yeah, these are the type of things we would normally negotiate and bring to City Council. This didn't come up until, you know, 10 minutes ago. So, if we knew it was going to be an issue, we would have addressed that. I would tell you that anything less than six months is kind of what I consider to be the standard. A six-month lease is pretty, I mean, if you're going to do something less than a six-month lease, then it seems to me like, but that's where I would start, is that your deed restrictions would say that you, if you're going to rent the property, that it has to have at least a six-month or longer lease on it.
And I can tell you honestly, call someone over in Hammock Beach, and they will tell you that property values dropped during this entire time. Now, it dropped somewhat because of the recession, but during that recession, it just created this opportunity, and probably some good intention on some part, where people were upside down on their home, and they needed to generate revenue, and I don't think it started out that way. But what it created was a mecca of this seasonal change in the whole residential landscape of that community. And it didn't happen all the time, and it doesn't happen all the time. But I just know legislatively, we are restricted due to Tallahassee's decision-making. And I'm just, I'm simply requesting that you consider this. A, from my own experience as a recommendation, to know that it's not really, if you're looking to develop this kind of property, at a very high-end type of property, you don't want that in your neighborhood, you really don't.
And we have really no intention of doing that. I just have not really considered the issue and what the ramifications are on the value of the property until five minutes ago. So, I would tell you that I will, I promise you that I will consider that issue. We'll address it with staff in the planning process. And again, we don't have any intention of doing short-term rentals, that's not the business that we're in. So, I will consider it and take your recommendations into-
I appreciate that, thank you. Did you have any other comments to make from the speakers?
I just have one brief comment.
Yes.
I think that Ms. Lockhart, when she got up here, may have confused this project with the next one on the agenda because our development agreement prohibits fast food, restaurants, and gas stations in our commercial property. So, I think that there's an issue there, so.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. You're going to hear the same comments again on the next item because she skipped this one, so.
So, I just wanted to clarify that. There are some commercial mixed use with the next project, the Roberts Road one.
All of those kind of comments were not relevant to this project.
And just for the, and John Nett, thank you for your comments, and we will take as aggressive action as possible to ensure that we open that dialogue. And as far as the fire protection, you know, that's a good point. Jim, just, when we approve these projects, I know we do not have, do we have a fire impact fee, or do we not?
Yes.
It hasn't been-
It's for capital, but yes, we have a fire impact fee for residential, I believe.
But when we approve these projects and they come in, how do you view adding staff to make sure that the response times are managed, those kind of things?
Once again, impact fees do not go towards staff. What we'll get is a property taxes, which do go towards our ability to add staff. We have a, I call it a quince, it's, we basically have two ladder trucks. They're two different styles, one has a bucket on, the other one is a straight stick. And I, he's going to ignore me, I guess, right now. Okay. So, and one of them was donated by the developer of Town Center. Now, that's a lot larger developer, development, et cetera. But at this time, we have the ability, I mean, we have the equipment to address high-rise. I don't know how tall, and how many stories?
While he's walking up, what can the fire impacts go to?
Primarily, what we've always had them go to is new buildings.
Oh, okay, fire stations.
Fire stations. I don't know if they can go towards, you know, the capital equipment, like the engines, et cetera. They can? Okay. So, we-
Scott, excuse me?
Yeah, usually new.
Right. And it's got, there has to be that causal relationship between the need for that capital and the new development.
Yeah.
And I say-
This, 2020?
22 and 11. 22, Palm Coast, Mike Beadle, City Fire Chief. Mayor, there would be City 22 and Flagler Beach 11, and then two or three other stations. I won't get into all the particulars. We do have two ladder trucks, they're both 100-foot, one's a stick, one's a bucket. To tell you how high we can go with it, depends on setbacks, depends on what the plan looks like. There's all kinds of things we need to look at when the plan comes in for anything, anything over two stories. So, to give you the proverbial, yes, we can, we train on high-rise, we have equipment for high-rise, but how high we can get in that, it really doesn't matter on a ladder truck. There's going to be internal equipment that the developer has to put in, per code, to protect us and to get into the residence. So, the height of the ladder truck, maybe seven stories, depending on the setbacks. So, I can't really give you that answer until we see the plans.
Would all these condos going up, is two enough?
Well, there's four in the county, total. We have two, the county has one on the beach side, and Flagler Beach has a 75-foot quint. So, and we're mutual aid agreements within the county, the state, and the region. So, if we need more resources, we call them, we get them. So, I think ladder-wise, I think, yeah, our county's very well-equipped with four ladder trucks. Two ladder trucks for a community our size is actually a very adequate service. Correct. And that gets into the ISO and the ratings and our insurance and stuff. That's why we've developed the way we have.
Sure, okay. All right, council, any other questions or comments? Entertainer motion?
Yeah, I don't know if this is for Mr. Reichman or for the planning staff. So, if we adopt the matter that's before us on this agenda item, the development agreement attached to this ordinance will be the development agreement in place for this project, is that correct?
It'll be the corresponding development agreement to now MPD zoning.
Okay, well, that's, and I guess that's my question, and I don't want to be overly technical. If there is a difference in the, anything in the ordinance, in the development agreement we are adopting tonight and the most recent development agreement the county adopted for this project, specifically if our development agreement does not address something and the county agreement does, does the county agreement continue to control that aspect of the development?
That's a very good question.
The reason I ask is because County Ordinance 2008-35, which I'm not sure is the most current county development agreement for this project, does contain a section that deals with a rental program. It doesn't say short-term rentals, it doesn't say timeshare, but it excludes, it reserves to the developer the right to operate a rental program. And I don't remember seeing a corresponding provision in our development agreement.
I do not have the answer to that question. All we are obligated to approve is the development agreement that is attached or part of the county's PUD. And apparently, and I'm going to punt, because I'm not sure what was done in 2016 or 2017 as far as the development agreement. But that which should be attached to our MPD should be the development agreement that is currently in place by the county, period.
Mr. Cuff, I would recommend to address this issue of short-term rentals that you put a condition on approval to have a minimum of what Flagler County has in their PUD agreement, or anything else that we can work out with the developer that they agreed to. So, that we definitely don't, you know, want to go something less than what is already being imposed on them by Flagler County. And I'm not, I don't think you should even have to ask that. That is what they came in, and that's what they should be abiding by. And so, I don't, without knowing exactly what that is, I think a generic, nothing less than what is already imposed on them by Flagler County, they've got to go at least that route.
And I'm doing the best I can here, but Exhibit 1 to the agenda item is the Marina Del Palma MPD Development Agreement, and I cannot find a date on it.
But I think we can cover it that way without having the exact details. But I think, Mr. Cuff, that address is yours, unless you want to wait for Bill.
I mean, as long as we can do that. I just, I'd hate to see us make a typo and be, you know, allowing something by omission in our agreement that wouldn't have been allowed or whatever. I understand we're stuck with whatever the county approved.
Right.
But I'd hate to have a Scrivener's error in our development agreement that lets them do something they couldn't have done.
Your point is very well-taken, and Section 2 of the ordinance-
Yeah.
What ordinance, can I ask?
The ordinance for the zoning.
Our ordinance.
Our ordinance. Our ordinance says that the zoning designation for the subject parcels hereby changed from and to City of Palm Coast Master Plan Development along with a development agreement. So, we certainly can specify in that paragraph the development agreement which is current. That currently binds this property, which creates whatever vested rights that this property currently has and is entitled to, and-
But I think what we're trying to do is just address the short-term rental, is that-
Well, that's an example because that came up. And one of the older development agreements that was attached to Ordinance 2008-35, County Ordinance 2008-35, contains language.
Let me see if I understand what you're saying, not being a lawyer. If it's not stated in the county PUD, we can impose something. And what Mr. Cuff was saying is, we don't want to miss that opportunity. I'm asking, I'm not telling.
I'm not sure I heard correctly, but if it is stated, is stated-
Well, let's say it's not. Let's say-
Then you're going to have to get the property owner's agreement to-
So, we can't do something, even though it's not in the-
To do something in addition to. But I think what Mr. Cuff's point is, is that if it's in the county PUD-
We don't want to give them more than that says.
Then we need to make sure it's in our MPD, in our development. If it's in the county development agreement, we need to make sure it's in our development agreement. Or something above and beyond that you've requested, they said they would take a look at.
If I may just be clear, that, I'm sorry, Jose Papa from staff, that the MPD agreement was translated from the most recent PUD agreement that the county approved in 2017, in March of this year.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so, and that agreement then would supersede the earlier ordinances and agreements?
Yes.
Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council members? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number H5. Mr. Reichman.
Just give me a second, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, Bob. Do you want us to wait? You're good? Okay.
Tell Bill to read slow.
Okay. Mayor, counsel, this is the first reading of Ordinance Agenda Item H5. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan as previously amended. And this is pursuant to Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes. This ordinance is amending the future land use or flume designation for 196 acres, more or less, of certain real property from mixed-use, high-intensity, and industrial Flagler County designations to mixed-used City of Palm Coast designation, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance. This ordinance includes a note on the future land use map to limit development within the Colbert Preserve-Roberts Point Master Plan Development area to 1,500 dwelling units and 200,000 square feet of non-residential use. This ordinance provides for conflicts, codification, severability, and effective date. Mayor, this is a legislative matter as we are amending the comprehensive plan.
Mayor, this is a legislative matter as we are amending the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Council, any, I'm sorry. Mr. Landon, go ahead.
Mayor, City Council, we actually have this comprehensive plan amendment, and then the next three ordinances are accompanying zoning, as there are three different property owners in this area. This is another one that's, well, it's just south of the one we just considered. It is between Roberts Road and Colbert Lane, or south of Roberts Road, and as it curves around between the two. The, once again, it has recently been annexed into the city, and yes, it does have a comprehensive plan and zoning from the county. In this case, we have sat down with the, because it's not so far along, it's basically raw property, we have sat down with the property owners. And you're going to see that one of them is own-industrial, and they've agreed to do commercial. So, it actually downzones it. So, we have a little more flexibility on this one because of the stage of where they are. And therefore, obviously, Jose is going to do a full presentation and kind of show the, he has a little comparison between what is approved by the county and what's being proposed here and what our standards are. So, if, Jose, you'd please take it, take it from here. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jose Papa with the Community Development Department Planning Division. This is a comprehensive plan amendment combined with zoning map amendments for properties which are located west of Colbert Lane in, I'm sorry, east of Colbert Lane and west of Roberts Road. The subject area, as stated previously, is 196 acres. It was annexed in 2015. The area remains largely vacant except for a 10-acre, 2-5-acre parcels, which are currently developed for two large industrial buildings on Roberts Road. And I believe you can see that. Again, the property is under multiple ownership, and you'll see the names of the property owners. Tuesday Corporation owns a 2-acre parcel at the corner of Roberts and Colbert Lane. Mr. and Mrs. Smith own this 10-acre parcel here, and the remainder of the parcel, about 184 acres, is owned by Sunbelt Holdings Colbert Lane LLC. The current designations, Flagler County designations, for a large portion of the property is mixed-use, high-intensity, with a smattering of industrial, mainly the 2-acre parcel is industrial, and the 5-acre piece is industrial under the current Flagler County Land Use Map designation. Staff is proposing and recommending that we, that the land use map designation for these parcels be changed to mixed-use, including a policy limitations for the area that's highlighted within the dashed yellow lines. And this area, as we will see later in the rezoning, is to be an MPD known as Colbert Preserve-Roberts Point Master Plan Development Agreement. So, that's about 184 acres where the permitted development within that would have a cap of 1,500 dwelling units and 200,000 square feet of non-residential use. Typical with any comprehensive plan amendment, staff did an analysis, again, between the mixed-use designation that the city proposes and what is currently permitted on the site, which is a Flagler County designation of mixed-use, high-intensity, combined with some industrial. And that, as part of that public facilities analysis, the results mainly are that you would see mainly a decrease in impacts on transportation, potable water, and sewer facilities due to the overall decrease in development potential. But you would see an increase in impacts on solid waste, parks, and schools, mainly due to a higher residential potential. One thing I have to be clear about is that, under the current Flagler County designation, there's various limits and requirements as to the mix of the types of uses within that Flagler County designation. So, there was an assumption made on behalf of staff that we would assume that 50% of the parcel can be developed for residential, 50% for non-residential. And that's only because the limits, it'll be arbitrary to pick it. Any number I pick would have been arbitrary, so. Moving on to evaluation environmental factors, again, there's no significant change in environmental impacts from the current flume to the proposed flume, again, with the previous, or the current flume, Flagler County mixed-use, high-intensity, and industrial. As presented, the proposed land uses are generally consistent with surrounding land uses. You have a mix of residential, but mainly to the west of the property are mixed-use designations, along with some mixed-use, low-intensity designations in the county. And to the north of it, you have mixed-use, high-intensity, industrial, commercial, high-intensity. And that area to the east is residential. So, special considerations strongly would need to be taken into account in the development of this site to ensure consistency with the residential low-density designation to the east of the property. Looking for its consistency with comprehensive plan policies, again, there's available infrastructure nearby. We have water and sewer to serve this site. It promotes land use patterns that do not increase the cost of providing utilities. Again, they're available adjacent to the site. What the proposed flume amendment, land use designation does is that it does help to promote, diversify housing opportunities. And the proposed land use designations recognize that certain commercial, non-residential uses would still be needed to serve what essentially would be an upcoming residential area. So, based on those, the findings are there are no significant impact on level of service or public infrastructure, no significant impact on environmental factors. It is consistent with surrounding land uses and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Based on those findings, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. And beyond that, the next step would be, if approved tonight, this map amendment will be transmitted to the state land planning agency for comments and review, and eventually we'll come back to City Council for second reading. Looking at the proposed zoning, again, we have 196 acres under multiple ownership. And the designations on these properties right now, again, the bulk of the area, about 184 acres, has a mixed-use, high-intensity planned unit development, or PUD zoning. And you have the 2 acres and 10 acres currently designated as Flagler County industrial. What's proposed is that the corner piece, the 2-acre parcel, would be designated as general commercial, the 10-acre parcel on Roberts Road, light industrial, while the PUD in the county would be changed to an MPD with city designation. Just looking very briefly at the proposed zoning designations, at the corner piece, 2-plus-or-minus acres designate to be designated general commercial, it is a corner lot, and under this proposed zoning, it provides for a wider option of retail and service uses, again, with a vision that it could serve the upcoming, impending residential development within the area. The 10 acres currently designated as industrial in Flagler County would be designated as light industrial here in the city. As previously stated, that site is currently developed with 50,000 to 40,000 square-foot industrial building. The light industrial designation does protect the existing development on that site. The site is, remains a permitted use within that zoning district. And staff's recommending light industrial in that that designation does not generally intrude into the surrounding uses. And some of the surrounding uses are proposing the buffer from that light industrial use through open space immediately adjacent to the west and south of that light industrial site. So, the remainder is for the bulk of the property, about 184 acres, formerly Grand Reserve West, and now Colbert Preserve and Roberts Point, now to be called Colbert Preserve-Roberts Point Master Plan Development. Staff is showing that the surrounding lands, the surrounding areas to this MPD are also designated as a PUD or Master Plan Developments. And the PUD, specifically the PUD to the north, is also a mixed-use PUD. This is a conceptual plan, development plan for that MPD. What we have basically here is a non-residential area towards the northern end, adjacent to the existing industrial, light industrial uses. You have an area that's proposed to be sort of a flex area at this time, right on Colbert Lane. So, that could be developed either for, at this time, either for residential or non-residential. And you see the bulk of the residential uses remaining into the, really to the southern portion of that property. I will now provide a comparison between the current development entitlements and what's being proposed under this MPD. And as you'll see, there is a significant change in the requested entitlements for the site. But we believe that we've provided some additional requirements that would eventually, would help to mitigate some of the additional, some of the additional entitlements that are proposed for the site. Under the current PUD, it is permitted to have 300 single-family units attached or detached. But it also needs to be clear that there were 40 acres within that PUD that were unencumbered or unentitled. So, there probably would, might have been additional entitlements that could be had. So, the proposed now is essentially 1,500 dwelling units, either single-family or multifamily. Commercial entitlements, as previously stated, there was a flexibility there that anywhere for, it was a minimum of 25% and up to a maximum of 50% of the site could have been developed. In this case, the PUD stated that it was to be limited to general commercial uses, but including office, warehouse, units, flexible retail, and some outdoor storage. Under the proposed MPD, the non-residential uses would be limited to 200,000 square feet of general commercial or light industrial use at Roberts Point, with 400 space, RV, or boat storage included within that permitted non-residential development. For the height, the current PUD permits 35 feet, maximum 35 feet residential, 45 feet commercial. The current PUD, or I'm sorry, the proposed MPD will limit the height of single-family to 35 feet, but would allow a 60-foot height limit for multifamily and commercial development. I have to be clear that the 60-foot height limit for multifamily is consistent with the city's multifamily standards. For setbacks on Colbert Lane, Roberts Road, in the current PUD, it's not clear what that setback would be for residential from Colbert Lane. But for the commercial, it was proposed to be 25 feet from Colbert Lane and Roberts Road. Under the proposed MPD, the setbacks will be 25 feet for residential uses from Colbert Lane and Roberts Road, while the non-residential uses would be 25 feet on Colbert Lane and 20 feet from Roberts Road. For landscape requirements, the current PUD has a 15-foot landscape buffer requirement for Roberts Road and Colbert Lane. Under the MPD, for residential uses, that's a 25-foot buffer on Colbert Lane and Roberts Road, while for non-residential, that's 25 feet on Colbert Lane and 10 feet on Roberts Road, per the Land Development Code. Under the current PUD, it's silent regarding the ingress and egress requirements. Under the proposed MPD, consistent with the city's Land Development Code, we're requiring two points of access for the development. Under open space requirements, under the current PUD, there was a minimum 25% of the gross area was required to be open space. Under the proposed MPD, there is a minimum that 40% of the area will remain as open space. For protection of tree canopy, under the current PUD, it's silent. Under the proposed MPD, they're required to provide a tree survey to identify hardwood hammock areas and to maintain, to help maintain the canopy integrity within that identified hardwood hammock area. For recreation requirements, it's included within the open space requirements. There's no minimum area requirement stated within the PUD. But under the proposed MPD, they would be required to meet our comprehensive plan requirement of providing essentially 8 acres per 1,000 folks, which converts to about 9.6 acres, 9 and 1/2 acres, per 500 units that they develop. So, bike path accommodations, again, they would be required to have sidewalks or bike paths through their development under current PUD and under the proposed MPD. Looking for consistency with the comprehensive plan, again, it's consistent with policies to look for opportunities to provide for a variety of housing products. Again, the proposed MPD and rezoning and zoning map amendments do not cause a financial hardship for the city in that we have the available infrastructure to serve these properties. Looking at the other criteria for zoning designations, threats to general health, safety, and welfare, compliant with other state, local, and federal regulations, and compatibility with surrounding land uses. The potential uses on site are generally compatible with surrounding uses, but require appropriate buffers. And it would be subject to further development review to look at the appropriateness of the required buffers and see if there's any additional buffers that would be required depending on the uses. Does it accomplish a legitimate public purpose? Again, the proposed MPD in itself would provide an opportunity to diversify the housing stock in the city. The proposed zoning provides opportunities for service and retail uses adjacent to the residential areas. And finally, for the existing uses that are already within this site, the proposed zoning will protect those existing uses, namely that industrial use that's on Roberts Road. So, based on those findings, staff and the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board recommend that City Council approve the proposed zoning map amendments for the 2 acres from Flagler County Industrial to City of Palm Coast General Commercial, the 10 acres from Flagler County Industrial to City of Palm Coast Light Industrial, and 184 acres from Flagler County PUD to City of Palm Coast MPD, along with the development agreement. And consistent with the comprehensive plan, this will come back at second reading of the comprehensive plan amendment. And even after all of this is approved, development on the site would still be required to go through the development process for subdivision master plan, platte approvals, and site plans. That concludes staff presentation.
Council, any questions for staff or comments?
How did we get from 300 residential units to 1,500 residential units, Jose? I mean, aside from after we level out the stack dust, is that the 40 acres they're going on? I mean, I don't mean to be snappish, but it's been a long evening already.
It was a request. We looked at that. The gross density of that 1,500 units is generally equivalent to what our multifamily residential districts would allow.
What does that work out to?
MFR1 is 8, MFR2 is 12. This is a 9. Gross dwelling units.
If I may add, that was a good case where city staff looked at and said, okay, what are our standards? And tried to apply it when, if they got that request. So, that's why I said this one does have some other flexibility in it, as long as both parties agree. And staff always uses our standard as that criteria. And the other thing, Jose, is there was undesignated areas of 45 acres...
40 acres, yes.
40 acres, and if they got, I mean, I don't know, what, 7 units per acre, you're still talking...
7 units per acre, then maybe another 280 units.
It's not quite apples and oranges. It's more apples and oranges, but hopefully that's helpful.
Well, I mean, going back to the last item, we're stuck with 300 units, because that's what the county's approved.
Right.
And we're getting, we've incorporated, and we have to plan for 40 acres that isn't designated for anything in the county agreement.
That's correct.
What would we have to approve for that 40 acres if they just were here in the city and they wanted to build... and they wanted to build something on it?
I suppose it would have been...
I mean, do they have any entitlements from the county as to those 40 acres?
Not in, not in their PUD, but within the comprehensive plan designation that they have, there would be, as Mr. Landon stated, the seven dwelling units per, I believe it's seven dwelling units per acre, yes.
Eighty dwelling units, so you're up to 580.
Yes.
I'm trying to do the math here, that's all. I mean, I, I know we need diversity in housing and I've, well, I'll save my editorializing until later, but the question was how'd we get from 300 to 1,500? And that's, we got to it because the developer asked us for 1,500, and the staff and the planning board are recommending 1,500, is that correct?
As a cap.
As a cap, yeah.
Yes, sir. As a cap.
They can build that and the developer doesn't know that they can build that.
I don't believe, that's a developer question.
All your questions for now?
For now, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Developer, is, who's the developers here? Developer want to present?
Good evening. My name is Clint Smith with Clint Smith Consulting. I'm here on behalf of the developer, current property owner is Sunbelt Holdings Colbert Lane. Just a quick history, this was part of an annexation a couple of years ago. Actually, the property owner then was Florida Landmark Communities, my former employer. So I worked on this right from the beginning. The annexation was completed, there was a pre-annexation agreement similar to the last one. The MPD agreement was actually submitted under Florida Landmark Communities, and then they sold the property to the current property owner, and so I have continued kind of in that capacity of working on it. Just a quick summary, Jose gave you a good summary of it, but most of the property in the MPD is allowed to be multifamily. The requirements in the MPD match exactly your MFR2 zoning category out of your Land Development Code. The rest of the property, the smaller area, is non-residential. In the MPD agreement, you're allowed to do, consistent with your code, commercial 2, office 2, and light industrial. And in the agreement, the requirements of those categories are the same or more restrictive than what is in your code. So just a quick summary, I'm sure some of these other issues will pop up, but I'm here to answer any questions. And this is the first reading, so there will be another one a couple of months from now.
Could you address Vice Mayor Cuff's question to why the request came about for the number that was proposed?
Sure. I think you said it in a way there that the, the city has been somewhat deficient in multifamily. I think we recognize that. And if you go back to when the MPD, or the PUD in the county was done, it was 2005, 2006, it was a different world. Everybody was trying to do single-family as fast as they could. Now there's a deficiency in multifamily. This is an area that you've seen from other requests, both in the city and out of the city, where people are trying to do multifamily. It fits exactly with where I think multifamily should be. It's right off two major roadways. It's not in the middle of some other residential area where there's neighbors right next door to it. So it was just a request to try to kind of help meet that need. And I know when you talk multifamily, everybody says condominium, but it doesn't necessarily have to be condominium. There are apartments and other forms of multifamily. Thank you.
Any other counsel comments or questions? Or open up to the public? Any member of the public wishes to speak on agenda item number H5? Please do so at this time.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. Do, do we have a sufficient amount of water to accommodate all these new buildings that are going up? You know, I keep reading in the newspaper that eventually we're going to be a dry state, that we, there won't be any water on. Now, you know, I ask and they keep saying, well, we'll drill a well. But, you know, there's a certain amount of water that you can only get. And after a while, you know, it goes dry. So I'm just asking, do we have enough water? Another question is, when somebody buys a house, or they go through real estate or whoever, is the seller required to tell them what's going to be built? Like, you know, you're buying this house and there's going to be an airport built five years from now, or we're going to build condominiums in this area? Are they required to, to tell the buyer that this is going to happen? That's all I got.
Thank you.
I'll just huddle away now.
Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Jim Cullis. I'm the managing partner for the community proposed project to the north, Lighthouse Harbor. And Ken and I have been friends for a long time, and I think his company's done a great job in developing Palm Coast Plantation, and they certainly do good quality work. And I do think this is a piece of land that should be developed and is appropriate for what they're suggesting. I submitted our master plan, which is in the county, but eventually will be in front of you. Jose, do you have a copy of that?
I have a copy, but we have no way of pulling it up on, on the screen.
Okay. Let me, let me give it to you. And the only part, only part that I want to bring to your attention that I have any concerns about is directly across, we have the same zoning they have, which is high intensity, or same land use, high intensity, mixed use. We have the same, a similar zoning in that we have a MPD in place, and our MPD has a concept bubble plan, which you all have seen thousands of. Directly across the street from what they call their Roberts Point project, we have residential. And I would urge you to just, or in the planning staff, to work with Mr. Belchi and his, his group, to look at, at the impact of their commercial across from our residential. And if you read their 2008 development agreement, there is language in there that, that addresses their commercial, and some of the language talks about neighborhood commercial character. Not in all of it, obviously there's industrial down the street, and I think putting light industrial next to industrial makes sense. But directly across from our commercial, I would rather see neighborhood-type commercial. There is, there's a number of things that are in their MPD that I would have concern about. Kinnels and animal boarding, manufacturing, truck stops, outdoor storage. So I would, I would ask that there's some looking, there's some consideration of the transition between our residential and the commercial across the street. Also, the MPD that's in place, the 2008 MPD says that they can do RV and boat storage, but it also says that it has to be screened from the street. And there's all sorts of definitions of what screening is, and what, to me, screening means you can't see it. So what I don't want to see, and I think the city doesn't want to see, along, you know, Roberts Road and Colbert are a gateway to Palm Coast from Flagler Beach and 100.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, huh? All right. I did, I did send, I'm not good at being, you know, I did send a letter to you all, which I hope you've considered.
Okay.
It was included in the package.
But you would take a look at it, thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Jim Smith. I'm the owner of the commercial property designated in your H7. We're a 60-year-old company. We originated the first 15 years in Ormond Beach. We asked to go as far away from civilization as we could possibly get. We wanted to go out beyond the airport, if you're familiar with Ormond Airport, which is now the Ormond Industrial Park. They said, no, not a chance. That's not going to be industrial. You need to be within the first block off US1. So we bought the whole block on the first block off US1, so that we'd have plenty of buffer, little room to expand, and so on. At the end of 15 years, we had houses built all the way around us. We had neighbors complaining because we didn't want many bikes and baseball diamonds on our property that was our buffer to keep us away from the residential areas across the street. Plus the whole Withy Young Street in there that was a, was a buffer. And we talked to our attorneys. They said, it's a very simple thing to do. You sue the city, you have two R parcels, you can't have the zoning on the same on two or, or different, on two different areas of the same parcel of property, and you can be there. We tried to get along with our neighbors, we could see the writing on the wall, so we looked for another place to go. Palm Coast was where we looked. ITT Community Development at that time said, what do you want to do? And we told them, we just want to be out in the middle of nowhere, do our own thing. So they said, well, we have restrictions. We're looking for people that have a multimillion-dollar payroll, that have more than a 10-year history of being in, in business. And we said, well, our situation is we want to be heavy industrial and we want to be away from everything. So it was a marriage. We've been here for 30 years. Sea Ray is our only neighbor, they're heavy industrial. We are heavy industrial. Now it's going to be changed. In a one-mile strip from, on Roberts Road, you're now going to have six different land uses, six different zonings in one mile on that highway. You're going to have light industrial, you got heavy industrial across the street, you've got multi-housing in back of us, you've got commercial down on the corner, and you've got low intensity across the street from us. I see the writing on the wall again, you know, unless we can get assured of some kind of buffers.
Okay, thank you for your comments, your three minutes are up.
Mayor, I stopped the clock because he's actually an applicant. He's one of the property owners, and, and we do not, oh, we do not limit the time for a property owner.
The other applicants?
What's that?
The only applicant speaking?
No, there are, there's actually three in this case, so, sorry for the confusion. But he didn't know that, that when it came to applicant time, he should have been speaking at that time. I hope you don't, it's up to you, though. But that, that was the concept behind it. He is actually one of the property owners. He is not just...
One that's speaking, or is he the second one that's speaking?
Second. I'm not, I'm not sure, I didn't understand the question.
Is he the second property owner speaking?
Yes.
Okay, so Mr. Smith was the first?
Nope. Right. They're both Mr. Smiths, so.
Second Smith or Smith.
Jose, put up, put up the big, put up the big map, so. This is, this is, this is confusing because we have three, miss, well, please, please go backwards, Jose. I think, I think we need to clarify what's, what's happening. Go to the site plan.
But he was the Smith, Smith Properties.
Yes, sorry, okay, that one. Mr. Smith, who was just talking, this is his property.
Okay, it is.
Okay. The, but, and I think he's, the concept is, is, is that what he was concerned about was he has nothing around him other than Sea Ray boats at this point. If you notice that there is a very significant buffer as, as far as any residential, et cetera, around his property. I think with Mr. Smith is, is, that was point one. Point two, he's requesting heavy industrial, which we think, I mean, light, what he has right now is allowed for in light industrial. So we don't, it's not non-conforming, so that was the issue. Sorry about the confusion, but I was just...
And Clint was speaking on the 184 acres.
Right, which is all of everything else. And then we have another property owner that just has a corner, and I do not see that property owner being represented here tonight, but that's the one going from industrial to, to commercial.
Okay, so council members, are there any questions for the second applicant?
Mr. Smith, yes.
Mr. Smith, too. Okay, so next speaker.
Yes, sorry.
Good evening, George Mayo, Palm Coast. My question is, the section with the 300 going to 1,500 units, is that going to be an HOA? Again, if it is, comes up the question of short-term daily rentals. The county had worked long and hard, as you may know, to come up with some kind of regulations for that, which the legislature basically shot down. And with our local representative, now I believe Speaker of the House, has agreed to sit back down and try and create a compromise between Flagler County and other counties on short-term rentals. If so, as you were thinking about having that conversation with the earlier applicant with the property, maybe again, this is, if this is an HOA, we can have that conversation as this moves forward. Because the close proximity to the beach seems like this is a good area where you could have the same issue of short-term daily rentals, et cetera, et cetera. I am not speaking here against the proposal here, but it's just something that we have to look at. And again, whether in between, we look long and hard and talk to the county on where they are in negotiations, on coming up with the new regulations with Tallahassee and where that has progressed, that's something we need to look at. Because this, we will be preempted, as you know, between what the state says and, and everything else. So just something that we have to look at in this, and anything that comes up before us from here on out, because it's going to be a question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'll close public comment, I'll take it back to the council. I guess I have a question on, well, Mr. Carroll's comments about water, is it sufficient?
Yes, we have, you know, I mean, and, and once again, it's, if these type of projects are not approved or annexed in the city, we're still obligated to provide water and sewer if they're developed in unincorporated counties. So those, that kind of infrastructure is going to impact us one way or the other. But yes, this is all part of our master plan and, and expected growth, has been in our growth area for some time.
I'm not sure if, what the real estate laws are, if they're required to disclose what's being built, I'm not sure.
Uh, I do not know the answer to that.
Well, I'm not a Realtor, but my understanding is you can be a buyer's Realtor and you can be a seller's Realtor. So if you are a seller's Realtor, then your obligations are to the seller. If you are representing in your capacity as a Realtor, the buyer, and Mr. Cuff, I don't know if you want to correct me on this, but...
Oh, you go right ahead.
I didn't think so. I didn't think so.
The term buyer beware comes from?
Well, I will tell you that there is always, there, there is an obligation for the, for Realtors, my understanding, to provide awareness to a buyer of certain items, like whether there's a mandatory homeowners association that will have deed restrictions. There could be specific obligations for Realtors that are, that are in the contract between the buyer and, and the Realtor. But apart from that, you know, a buyer has, arguably has certain obligations to themselves to, to make themselves aware of, if they're buying a lot and there's 150 acres of raw land next to them, I think that's a, that's a, that's always a concern.
And Mr. L, as far as Mr. Cullis's comments, can you answer those? Have you had discussions in regards to his concerns?
I have not, but I know our planning staff is, and there is still, and I think you're going to probably see some, some minor changes between the first reading and second reading as we try to work through some of those issues. Mr. Cullis brings up some good points, and it's just a matter of working it out with the property owner. I believe they're in conversation, but, okay, good, they're going to address it.
And Ms., I would just, Ms. Lockhart, too, provided some comments. I think she spoke on the wrong, wrong item, but she presented that as part of your package, too.
Right. Ken Belchi, again, I, too, respect Mr. Cullis and his contributions to the community, and I will promise the council to work with him to work out any of his concerns before the next reading.
Yeah. Okay, and you addressed Mr. Smith's...
Yeah, I just want to... Yeah, I just want to stress to Mr., the Smiths, Mrs. Smith, that we will keep a buffer, so there's not residential abutting the industrial, as you can see on the plan. To the, to the north of them, that's non-residential. That's actually commercial. And, you know, Jose can point out some of the heavy industrial, and this would not be appropriate for some of the, what would be allowed, heavy industrial if this use was to ever go away. But both of Mr. Smith's properties have already been built on, and their uses right now will be allowed to stay. It's a very important industry for us. If you don't know, they actually build the machines that build railroad wheels or train wheels, so very unique and very fascinating process. So very important, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that he doesn't have any problems there, just like Sea Ray. Same, same concept. Both of those are important employers for us. And we're actually hoping Mr. Smith is able to expand or invite somebody else in, within their existing buildings, because they're built out.
What you're trying to do is make sure this whole corridor is looked at more comprehensively.
And we believe this does that. And we like the idea of having commercial up there at Roberts Road and Colbert, because that's kind of the gateway into Sea Ray boats and Smith, and it just makes a lot of sense, and then have the residential go further to the south. Mr. Cullis's property, you know, that's where we have to figure out how to make those two work together.
And where is that?
Mr. Cullis's property?
Yes.
It's going to be this right up here.
Okay.
It's, it's, it literally is the old cement plant itself.
I got you, okay.
So that's where you can see it's directly across the street from this. The two of them working together makes a lot of sense, and they're in that process.
So going from, I know you, the school district has to ensure when they're, we're seeing this increased impact, going from the 300 to the 1500, has there been discussions with the schools at all?
Jose, you'll have to answer that.
Yes, we, we are always in communication with them when we have a comprehensive plan amendment. There's a representative from the school district who sits on the planning board whenever there's a, an item, rezoning or land use map amendment, that impacts capacity on schools. So this one, he's seen, I think what, what it is, is that at the comprehensive plan level, you just look at what that impact might be in terms of number of students. When you get down to getting your actual entitlements, such as a plat or a site plan approval with a development order, they would be required to show that from the school district, they would be able to serve the number of students that they are going to produce as a result of that development. So the review continues, but at this, at the comprehensive plan level, just a general basic analysis of, this is what, how many students it'll produce now, this is how many students it'll produce with this change, that's the difference.
But it's, it's not, it's not one-to-one, because...
It's, it's not.
If, if they go up to as much as 1500 units, that is going to be multifamily, and the number of students per unit will be fairly low. If they go around 300, and that's going to be single family, and you're actually going to get more students out of the 300 than you are the 1500. So in my opinion, the higher density actually reduces the number, number of students.
And that is why it is done at that, when you get closer to going vertical level, that analysis becomes more important.
And this development itself, I mean, I'm looking at different entrances and different exits on the roads, but what impact is, do you think is this going to really see overall when we're talking about Colbert Lane?
Very little. I think Roberts Road is where most of the access is coming in and out of, more than Colbert Lane. There is a potential that Colbert and Roberts Road, you're going to need a signal, just similar to what you have at State Road 100. But I think that's, if you're going to see impacts, that's where you're going to see it, is at Roberts Road, which is where you want it.
And just add, our development agreement has specific language in there. When they come in for their subdivision, when they get closer to kind of knowing what they want, they have to do a full traffic analysis study.
And, and to George's point about the HOA, is this...
This is a new, new issue that's coming up to, tonight. Same, same comment as, as before. Now, I think apartments, that's, that's...
Very different than the last development.
Yeah, because if you have, yeah, if you have an apartment complex, they're not going to want, I mean, you've got a management company, and that's just a whole different ballgame. What you have is an absentee owner of one unit. They couldn't care less if they're tormenting their neighbors, and that's where the condo comes in. So I, I don't think that is an issue with this one as it was the last one. Mayor, as you know, the last one was ripe for someone to buy as investment and then see if they can't make some money off of giving it over to one of the short-term rentals. None of your apartment complexes are going to do that. They aren't going to deal with that headache.
Now, if you see vacation rental properties, you'll know that they're coming. I'm sure that's what happens. They go...
Right. So I, I, but I do think it's a good, good conversation that we need to be in tune with. We haven't had it as an issue, and it'd be nice not to have it in the future, and I think now is a good time to address it.
Any other comments or questions, council members?
Follow-up on the traffic issue, Mayor. Colbert Lane is a county road, so we have no jurisdiction over it. Do we have jurisdiction to make a developer in this circumstance put a traffic light at Roberts and Colbert Lane? Or do we have to go to the county and get the county to approve that?
Both jurisdictions will, will review that traffic study, but since Colbert, since Colbert Lane is under jurisdiction by the county, the traffic signal would, would be approved by the county also.
I'm, I'm just looking for any potential conflicts, if we think something's required and the county doesn't.
I believe it's, it's going to be based on traffic engineering standards, and I believe they're a little more black and white than a lot of us planners.
But Mr. Cuff, there is no question about the fact that ultimately it would be Flagler County, it would decide whether the signal can go in. You know, and the, I think Roberts Road is also a county road.
Yes, sir.
That was going to be my next question, yeah.
So it's another one now. I don't know if the county eventually would want to make Roberts Road a city road. It probably would make some sense if all that area's city. Colbert Lane, I don't, I haven't heard any comments about, thinking about doing that. But it definitely will require a joint. But once again, I mean, this impact on this, on Colbert is the same whether it's annexed or not annexed, so I don't see that this development itself really changing the impacts on the county and their road system. Because they've already approved it, something similar to it. That makes sense?
Something similar to it.
Yep. Well, yes, this one is not identical. We've stated...
No, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Land, and I, and I, that's fine. That answers my question.
One follow-up on that. So the impact fee?
Yes.
Well, let's go back to the traffic light. Yeah, the county said that we're going to see a report. Hopefully, they'll, you know, they'll do what we would have done based on that report. Who's paying for that?
The, the traffic study or the light?
Light.
Well...
The study is paid by the developer.
Yes, the study is paid hundreds of percent by the developer in one of the requirements of our code. The developer would pay for it, but then usually when you do that, what would happen is they would reduce their impact fees because it's one of those capacities. Or they would just pay full impact fees, and then it would be up to the city and county to, to determine how that works.
Got you.
So how many more of these do we have that are county and city?
Or it's just for yikes.
I'm curious, I mean, like Ray and the Air and all that, is that still county, city?
No, that's, that is all, well, there's the gap. So there is some county out, out there. State Road 100 on the south side, between Beltair and, let's say, Seminole Woods is mostly county, that, we've got a developer doing this right now. They're, they're getting all their entitlements, and will be coming in as soon as they want to, to start going vertical, because they know they've got to get water and sewer. That is probably one of the most frustrating, because if State Road 100 between Beltair and I-95 is not Palm Coast, I don't know what is. I mean, that's, yep, so those are probably, can Ray, Jose, you think of another area where we...
East of Roberts Road is still in the county?
Yes, in this, this general area.
Yes, sir.
And then the, and then it comes, I mean, as that border around the perimeter gets filled, the border just moves, and there's a new perimeter. I mean, so it's not going to end until we hit the river or until, you know...
Well, there's not a whole lot left before you, you start getting in areas that, you get into Volusia County or areas that I just don't see that the city would ever be, want to...
Okay.
I mean, you're, you're not going to go, and Banel has a lot of it already incorporated. Probably the, the area would be, that area west of US-1 that we've already annexed, except for there's some holes and gaps out there of property owners that did not.
Banel is the largest landmass city in the state of Florida, is it?
Second largest in the way of, yeah, landmass.
I thought...
It's got two ends and two wheels.
Like a really interesting...
And two streetlights.
I just was wondering, I mean, how many more of these are we going to have to encounter, so...
You're going to have, have some more, but, I mean, it's...
But we'll be better at it.
Well...
Hopefully, we'll have some agreements in place, so...
We're trying to, yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, council members? Just that we're going to continue to work with the concerns of the neighbors and ensure that their comments are duly noted, to make sure that we're creating a comprehensive strategy in this area of our community.
We're hoping when it comes back second reading, everybody will have reached an agreement.
Can I just, not just that area of the community, the whole community, the same concerns, you know, that we're having here, we have, we potentially have in other areas. So let's keep that in mind. It's not the area, it's the people who are here that we want to take care of and, not take care of, but preserve what we told them was going to be here when they came.
And attempt to address all the issues as possible, but can't always address everybody.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
And second, and all...
Point of, I'm sorry, point of order. We've got three zoning ordinances, and we've got a flume amendment.
Agenda five?
What are we voting on?
Five?
Five?
You're just voting on the comprehensive plan amendment.
Correct. We've only read the title to H.5, which is the comprehensive plan amendment.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I mean, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H.6.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance of City Council, City of Palm Coast, where providing for the amendment of the official zoning map is established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, admitting the zoning designation for approximately two acres, more or less, of certain real property from Flagler County designation of industrial to City of Palm Coast designation of general commercial or comm. 2, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, which provides for conflict severability and effective date. Madam Mayor, this is a quasi-judicial matter, so if there have been any ex parte communications, those should be disclosed at this time.
This is one of the three zoning projects, and we have no additional comments.
Do I need to open up to the applicant?
Please. Public, I, I, sorry.
Make sure, okay.
I mean, the applicants have already spoken.
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda item number H.6, please do so at this time. If none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda number H.7, an ordinance, Mr. Reichman.
An ordinance of City Council, City of Palm Coast, where providing for the amendment of the official zoning map is established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, admitting the zoning designation for approximately 10.1 acres located at 465 and 551 Roberts Road, from Flagler County designation of industrial to City of Palm Coast designation of light industrial or IND-1. Such properties are more protected and described in Exhibit A, providing for conflict severability and providing for an effective date.
Daff has no additional comments.
This, again, is quasi-judicial, first reading, any ex parte.
Any member from the public wish to make public comment on Agenda item number H.7, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval with the, well, we, once we have a second, if anybody wants to discuss it, that's fine, but I'll move approval.
Second.
And before we vote, my only concern is the concern that Mr. Smith, the second Mr. Smith, expressed when he came up here. I was shocked, now shocked is too strong a word, I was surprised to learn that machining railroad wheels is considered light industrial in the city of Palm Coast. And I understand his concerns, and I certainly would never support a motion that would in any way force him to work in any kind of a grandfather situation, or to lose any of the entitlements that, that he has by virtue of what he's doing there now, or what reasonably could be done there as machining or manufacturing.
And I think what we would need to do is maybe get a legal opinion that, before the second reading, that confirms exactly that, and make sure that, yeah, we are not trying to put...
No, and I, I would hope not, and I mean, I, he may, he may not realize it, but I think I closed the sale of the land when ITT sold him that property, so it's been a long time, but...
He's got a vested interest.
Well, no, he's, I mean, it was the middle of nowhere.
All of Palm Coast was the middle of nowhere.
So I, I take, I take his concern, and I, I share it, and if we can have a confirmation of, of that before the second reading on this, I, I don't want to see...
Yes.
Bad things happen to an employer and a manufacturer and somebody who's been here longer than almost everybody these days.
That's our goal, so yes, we'll get the confirmation in writing to, and that's something that Mr. Smith can have also.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number H.8, Mr. Reichman.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance of City Council, City of Palm Coast, where providing for the amendment of the official zoning map is established in section 2.06 of the City of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, admitting the zoning designation for approximately 184 acres from Flagler County designation of mixed-use high-intensity planned unit development to city designation of master plan development or MPD with a development agreement. Such properties are more protected and described in Exhibit A and graphically depicted in Exhibit B, providing for conflicts for severability and providing for an effective date. Again, quasi-judicial.
This is the last zoning item, and Daff has no additional comments.
No quasi-judicial disclosures.
None?
Any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda item number H.8, please do so at this time. None, I'll close public comment. I'll take it back to this council, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Agenda item number I, which is the consent agenda, any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda item either nine, 10, or 11, please do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. Agenda item number J, which is public participation, any member of the public wish to make public comment on Agenda, on issues not on the agenda, please do so at this time.
I'm sorry, just a little tiny issue. If you drive on Florida Park Drive, between, let's say, where the pharmacy is and where our park is, on the north side, I guess it is, I don't know if we have a perched water table there or not, but that has remained soggy, wet, mushy. The mud boggers are having a great time driving through the little grass, well, it's a little grass, through the mud strip between the road and the sidewalk. And I was wondering if, as you do your long-term or even your short-term road improvements, we have in the past put perforated pipe and fabric underground to help drain water away. As Mr. Carr will attest to, Florida Park Drive is a very, very popular road, and as people drive by this particular area, it really is unattractive. It's starting to smell, and it probably should be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Agree 100%, and we've had those discussions, and we're... Agree 100%, and we've had those discussions, and we're working on a plan to solve that issue there, and you'll see some improvements soon, because it really, it's dangerous for the pedestrian, it's just all-around bad news. It highlights, I want to stress this, it highlights how much rain we've had and the impact it has that we haven't seen for such a long time, and this is one of those areas, and we have others, that just won't ever dry out, it seems like. And with this being on a sidewalk, we will, we will address it. Won't solve it totally, but we've got to figure out how to get some of that water out of there.
Discussion by City Council of Matters, not on the agenda. Council membership, please. Councilmember Nobiel?
One quick thing, that, it's funny you brought that up. I have the same concern as Mr. Nett's on rimfire. If it rains, and this is, and I know this year's been, you know, dramatic, but this is, I've been up and down that path, you know, almost every day for the last 10 years. When it rains, that bike path gets flooded. So if we can keep that into considerations with this, because it gets very dangerous, people start going out into the street, and rimfire is just not designed for sharing the road, especially the people there. I mean, the drivers, they're not, they're not excited about seeing you on the road.
Yes, we would agree. The history, the story behind that is, when I came here, we were just, you know, that was back in the day where we didn't have design, we were just putting some concrete in, and we learned our lesson big time on that one and got engineers involved. So it's, other than major redo, that one's going to be a tough one.
Tough one, yeah.
But I do think it's good, and we need to look at some of those areas that stay wet long-term and see if we can't come up with a solution for those two. It's an ongoing problem.
And then I was going to bring up the elevation, but I'm going to hold off until you ladies speak with Mr. Flanagan, and then get back with me. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Vice Mayor Cuff?
Well, since I was chastised for my extended comments after the last meeting by a former member of this council, I have nothing further for this evening. No, no names.
Discussion by City Attorney of Matters, not on the agenda. Your ordinance stout?
Just want you to know, Mayor, that I've been approached by used car dealers to give the disclaimer on TV ads, given the skills that I've developed in this position.
I was thinking, mudding advertising.
Discussion by City Manager of Matters, not on the agenda.
Let me start with one, a follow-up that Mr. Nobiel has brought up recently. Our TPO, our Transportation Planning Organization, is meeting tomorrow and has that issue of Volusia County, we believe that's who's really backing this, trying to increase the local match for some of those dollars that go towards local projects, up to 50%. Right now, it's 10%. And what that does is for your smaller communities, basically makes it very difficult, I mean, if you talk about recessive taxes where, you know, you have people that 50% of a project they can't afford, where Volusia County can. So in essence, what they're trying to do is shift these dollars to the larger areas, which in this case means Volusia County. So hopefully, City Council would support Mr. Nobiel staying with the 10%. Jose sent you out all out, kind of the background on that, just wanted to make sure that everybody was on that board and Mr. Nobiel had the backing of City Council.
We're going to, unfortunately, it appears they already have the votes, because they had the vote to move the meeting that was the week of Thanksgiving to tomorrow, and the reason was most of the Volusia County people were not going to be there. So we all voted against that, but they voted for it, the few of them, and because it's a weighted vote, it's there. Honestly, I'm going to be very honest, I don't think we're going to keep 10%, I think they got the votes for that. What we're going to try and push for is 20. I mean, that's, I mean, that's what I'm going to try and push for, 20, not 25. I don't even know if I'll get that 5%.
But, and this, like confirmation, the rest of the council agrees that this is not a good thing for, because we have so many small cities and communities that, these are the local dollars, these aren't your big dollars for big projects, these are the ones that they use for, you know, paths, safety studies, those type of things, that can have a much larger impact on your smaller communities having to throw in that kind of local dollars. Okay.
The TPO director just moved to Palm Coast?
She lives here, yes, I don't know how long ago.
Oh.
And she, every time I see her, she comments about our paths and how great all our trails and paths are, yes.
You telling her we need the dollars to keep the roads? It's better than being with a 10% patch.
That's right.
And then it's, let me talk a little bit about, you know, the holiday schedule. Once again, regular workshop next week, Tuesday morning, and then a business meeting the following Tuesday is normal. And then we get into, you know, the week between Christmas and New Year's where we always cancel, and then the following business meeting, which is January 2nd right now, hasn't formally been canceled, but we don't have anything on that agenda. And once again, a lot of the work for those agendas are done the week or two beforehand, which is in the holiday season for us. The, and then our activities this Saturday, you know, starting at 4:00, there's pre-parade activities here at Central Park, and then the parade starts at 7:00 here around Central Park. And then during the, this time of the year, we, once again, I want to encourage everybody to buy local, and we're trying to get that word out, so every chance we get, it always helps our local businesses and our tax base and everything else if we can buy local. Parks and Rec has some camps proposed for the kids that aren't in school, Jack Frost, Frosstivity Camp, whatever that means, you know, I love the creativity, and then Tennis Center has some tennis camps, or Tennis Program has tennis camps, I don't know if it's at Center or some of the other parks. Go to our website to look at some of those activities that people can have fun during the holidays. And then as a reminder, those people that buy a natural tree, that our tree recycling program will be from 8:00 to 1:00, January 6th, that's a Saturday, that you can turn your tree in and we chip it up and recycle it. Also this year, because it's very popular during Arbor Day, we're going to have the document shredding company out there, so if you want to go up to your attic and get all those documents, you wonder why you ever kept them, but you really don't want them in somebody else's hands, you can bring those in, and we'll have a shredding company there that is bonded and everything, make sure they get shredded correctly. So that's a little added something this year. Mayor, that's all I have.
Fantasy lights?
Oh, fantasy lights?
Holiday season.
Yes, every night. Every night, thank you. Yes, that's, that's old news, though, I mean, that's not...
Sorry, I had my minute, but I couldn't.
No, it's a great program.
We adjourn.